We have 46 slides that we're going to try to work through tonight. We're hoping to move through the slides themselves at a fairly steady clip, but we're happy to take clarifying questions during the presentation, with the hope of having some time at the end protected for some discussion and some more in-depth questions about any of the material that we're going to go through. Momentarily, I'm going to have Director of Land Use Community Services, Erin Henry, come to the podium. He'll be walking us through the community indicators portion of the presentation. Then our Director of Finance and Administration, Rodney Conley, will take us through the financial indicators and benchmarking that we've been looking at the last three years. The community indicators are something that we introduced last year, which looked at some of our demographic information beyond just our financial position. And then I'll offer some comments and some observations at the end in the wrap-up before we move into a Q&amp;A. And I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Jen Breaker, the Assistant Town Manager, and Steve Pulis, the Chief Assessor, who are here tonight, who contributed to the presentation that we're going to be working through now. You want to go to the next slide? So the summit is designed, or was designed, to be an inclusive discussion among the major boards in town, which is why we invite the school committee and the library trustees and the finance committee and the planning board to be here with the selectmen to work through these indicators. It really focuses on the financial health of the community across a number of key areas. It's separate from the budget process because the purpose is to focus in on demographic and financial trends and their implications for the community and its myriad stakeholders, from residents and officials to business owners, to the rating agencies and investors and the like. And the indicators and their associated benchmarks help us understand how we're doing, and they do form a large part of the rating process that we go through when we sit with S&amp;P each time we issue debt. But they're not perfect, and they cannot by themselves provide a full understanding of the town's financial condition, which is also influenced by external factors, like, you know, economic forces, internal factors like management practices, climate change, which is something that's starting to have an impact on municipal budgets across the Commonwealth, intergovernmental constraints, political culture and the like. And so before I hand it over to Erin, I just put a few things on the slide here, just kind of a highlight of some of the things we've worked on the past year. The May Annual Town Meeting appropriated $1.5 million from free cash into our general stabilization, which brings our current balance in that fund to just over $3 million. The slide later will show 1.5, and that's because it's looking at the year that we closed out in June, but that was an important action taken by the town meeting. The selectmen adopted financial policy guidelines in June. We had some policy, some financial policies that were adopted in 2016, targeting some very specific areas. This document, which is on the town website, sort of covers everything else. So we have a pretty comprehensive guide now for how we approach financial management. We achieved AAA late summer from Standard &amp; Poor's, which was timely because we issued $20 million in debt on the Smith School immediately after that. And from where we were in June to where we ended up in August, we're looking at roughly half a million dollars in cost avoidance on that first round of issuance for the Smith School. The Light Board and the Danvers Retirement Board approved the payment of $4.2 million to pay off the balance of the electric division's unfunded pension liability. That's a big deal. That will start to have some immediate budget impacts, starting not this year because of the actuarial accounting that happens on the utility side, but by the calendar year '21 budget, we're going to see some real, some budget savings starting to matriculate through as a result of that action. And then just last week, we received our free cash certification for the year that just closed, $5.6 million, which exceeded where we thought we were going to land. It's lower than where we were two years ago. We were $7.1 million two years ago, $5.2 last year, but this is a strong number. And so we're pleased to receive that from the DOR. And with that, I'll hand it off to Erin.
Thank you, Steve. Last year, we introduced the community indicators portion of this. I think I was glad to do that because I'm not a money guy. I'm more of the data guy, demographics guy. And I think this is an important part to understand what's happening within the community. Last year, one of, point of emphasis for the land use department is to do more data research on changing demographics of the community. And so this was very timely last year when Mr. Bartha asked us to jump into the financial summit. And in the months since, hopefully, you have seen myself or the Planning Director David Fields do a much more in-depth version of this. And if you haven't and you want to, we will, we're happy to come and give it to you. Not everybody loves it, but a lot of folks have seen it and enjoy it. And I think it's pretty insightful to where we're going as a community. So, back to the slideshow. Our population, if we were doing this in a week, we'd have a harder number for 2018. But basically, I think what the point here is that we've experienced very slow, steady growth. We're averaging about half a percent a year in population growth. And again, and we'll talk more about what's happening within the population because we're not really adding housing units to the community. So a lot of the changes within the population are being driven by existing, changes within the existing housing units that we have already built. So right now, we're probably in, you know, around 20, a little under 28,000. This chart, one change we wanted to add from last year to this year is to try to provide a little bit more context to our slides. So last year, we showed you a bunch of Danvers numbers, which are very enlightening, but it's helpful to have a little bit of something to comp those against. So what we've done this year is we've added Essex County and the state to our slideshow. Here, we're doing year-over-year rate of change. The dataset for the town, given its population size, is a little more volatile than the larger population of the state or the county. So those lines are a little smoother than our line. But generally speaking, it shows that we're growing between 0 and 1% in any given year. And that's pretty consistent with what we know is coming out of the planning office or the zoning appeals approval process. So I think what, this is probably not very exciting. What we're really interested in is what's happening within the population because we have some real serious demographic and socioeconomic changes occurring. The ICMA kind of playbook on what to track highlights the under-18 and the 65-plus populations in particular. I'm sure you've heard of something called the Silver Tsunami. The baby boomers aging out, really changing the demographics of the United States in general. So here, we've kind of sliced that, comparing it 2000, 2010, and the 2017 data for Danvers, the county and the state. And again, fairly consistent with what you'd expect for a suburban community. I had a slide prepared that didn't make it into the show, but we've really looked at this data for all age cohorts, all the way back to 1970 forward. And it's, in my opinion, we all kind of geeked out on it a little bit in the conversation, but it didn't make the slideshow because of time. But again, we're keeping an eye on this. These two populations don't tend to earn much. They tend to need services from the community. So we do want to keep an eye on what's happening within these populations. One thing that we use often, and again, I think in the slideshow, I think the bonding agencies tend to look at these as indicators of wealth and health for your community, but we also use them in the planning profession. Per capita income, just a quick snapshot of what your total population earns when you take total population over total earnings. So again, suburban community should be a little higher than the county and the state. That seems to be flattening out a little bit. And again, I attribute those to changes we're experiencing within the population because we have a U-18 population that's kind of holding firm. And we have a growing population above this 65.
Erin, before you leave that, could I ask a question?
Yep, please do.
Per capita income.
Yep.
Two, two working people in a family, is this like per capita?
Per capita is total earnings over total population. So this includes the one-year-old baby who's making nothing, and it includes...
So it's an average, if we take all the population and all the earnings? Okay, thank you.
And those are, again, are kind of used as a quick indicator of financial health. So again, what we would expect for a suburban community. Then we dive a little deeper. Another one you might hear is median household income. So what is the average household earning? And this will be significantly higher than per capita because this is basically just those in a household. And again, there's a little nuance to that. But again, this is typical of what you'd expect in a suburban community. We're typically running higher than the county and the state. That seems to be flattening a little bit. And again, I attribute that to, the sample size is a little bit smaller, so that variability you're going to see a little bit more acutely. And also, because our aging population is affecting us a little more heavier than the state in general. So then...
Erin, can we go back to that slide, please, and address the outlook?
Address the what?
Outlook, on the bottom. Talks about reducing the community's economic diversity.
This was two slides ago. This is one slide ago. But then you say, you know, what about households between 25 and 44? You see they're earning around $100,000. Same with 45 to 64-year-old households. So this will be one, I guess I still fit in this bucket. Now, when you look at households over 65, you see that income come way down. And again, so now we're averaging about, you know, 25% of your population is down here. So that really dragged some of these down. Married couples with children, doing quite well. And you'll see some dramatic growth here between 2012 and 2017. So our high end is doing, appears to be doing better than they were five years ago. Yes?
If a single-family headed household with children, if the person is 50 years old, are they in 45 to 64?
Yep, yep. So this is not exclusive. These are not exclusive buckets. So I'll just say, I'll use me as an example. I'm in this bucket, and I'm in this bucket. So this is just cutting the population in a bunch of different ways to show you that income variability.
But if you're a single-headed household with children, not married?
Correct, correct. I had that, but the slide was getting kind of busy.
Essentially, that's two potential working adults with children.
Yep, yep. And we did, in the deeper dive version, as a point of information, about 80, a little over 80% of our households are two-income households.
So I don't want to do the argument.
Nope.
In terms of the percentage of population that each of those 25 to 44 would represent?
Yep.
So what percentage does that mean?
I'd have to dive deeper. I do have a slide that has those numbers in aggregate, and I'm happy to share that with you. I would say we have about 23% of the population right now is between 25 and 44 years old, total population. So households are obviously a subset of population. About 30% are in the 44, 45 to 64. So about half of the population of the town is in these two buckets. Yep. Well, these are great questions. Again, it sounds like you guys want the roadshow.
Well, this is, we do, this is probably, I think, when we went through this, this is probably the slide that generates the most questions of anything in the entire slideshow, to be perfectly honest. Because you can draw any number of implications from this slide.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I think we'll touch on, hopefully, as we get going, there's another wrinkle to this that I'd like to highlight. So one thing we talked about last year, we were able to update this slide. The data, the 2017 data for this statistic was not available last year, so we were able to add this. This is basically, each of these colors represents 20% of the population. So this is the lowest 20%, middle, the second quintile, and so on. And then your top earners. And really, what we talked about last year, and I, for me, I'm not going to worry too much about the high end because I think they have the means to worry about themselves. I think what I like about this chart is the consistency that we see across the last decade. And I think that's really important. And we talked about this a little bit in regards to land use and some of the choices we might make in land use and making sure that we remain a community that can be welcoming and has options for families at any income band that they might find themselves in. Obviously, what you'll see on this chart is the top 20% doing very, very well. That said, we've been very consistent in these lower quintile bands, and I think it's important for us. And again, I don't think we're there yet, but as we go forward, this is something we want to monitor and make sure that we're always having housing options available for households in any income band.
Erin, I think that starts to answer the question Dan raised, which is, when we say managing, I think part of managing is, you know, making sure that the tax abatements we offer are reviewed and updated regularly, making sure that we have housing options for all levels of the income spectrum, and then making sure that we're providing services that are going to address the needs of these growing populations.
And again, as we talked about, the aging cohort, and you saw 65, you know, the average income of a 65-plus household, you know, this is right where they're falling, right in that, you know, between $50,000 and $100,000, the average 65-plus-year household. So we need to make sure that we're paying attention to what's available out there for households in that, in that band. So, switching it up a little bit, looking to the economy, jobs and the unemployment rate. The bars represent total jobs in the community. Relatively flat. It's been around, you know, 25,000 and change over the last couple of years. There is economic growth in the region. I will say the North Shore has added jobs over this time. Danvers is holding flat. It's trending up, but it's basically flat. Unemployment continues to fall. And again, compared to the state and the county, we are a good half a point lower typically than state in average. And as we go forward, at the end, we'll talk about what we think the economy is going to do in 2020. People are assuming that this is going to flatline and maybe start ticking upward. Over the next, at least maybe the first quarter will be okay, but the second half of 20. But we'll talk more about that. But again, fairly consistent. You know, if you want to work, the typical Danvers resident is able to find a job. And this is, again, just to make sure people understand, this is jobs in Danvers, and this is the residence of Danvers unemployment rate. So it's not, they're not the same thing.
Okay, we don't know what kind of jobs. You're just saying jobs. Could be a retail job, part-time, it could be...
Yep. So we have the breakdowns of the jobs, but not, that would have been really busy on this slide. But yes, we do get a breakdown of what they're categorized as. Healthcare, education. And they kind of cut it funky. Then there's also like your occupation, like are you a professional manager or are you not? So we're seeing growth in professional management, decline in office and sales. So again, it's kind of typical with what you've seen in eastern Massachusetts, that we're investing heavily in healthcare and basically STEM. So, and if you want more, we can get you all those data.
Erin, can I just make a comment on the job piece? I've heard you and other people say a lot of the folks that work in Danvers come from outside of Danvers, Boston, what have you. And I always found that a little fascinating. So I've kind of been asking folks, how far did you drive today? Or something that's not discriminatory. And for the people in the office I interacted with today, this morning, was Lynn Cambridge-Boston, working here in Danvers on Endercard Street. So it's kind of, oh, it's kind of surprising.
Yeah, we're a net importer typically. And the North Shore is a net importer. We tend to bring more people in. I want to say of the roughly 15,000 workers that live in Danvers, that spend their nights in Danvers, only about 3,000 of them work in town. So for the most part, they're going away. But we bring more in during the day than we send out. And again, I think, I was surprised. Boston specifically sends more workers to Danvers than Danvers sends to Boston, which boggles my mind when that, when we dug that stat up. So, we have, see a lot of east-west travel in, on the North Shore region. Well, moving on here, let's see if that, oop, oop, I skipped over. Don't sneak a peek. The states, the state tracks where you live and where you work. I mean, your employer's reporting that. Obviously, you're not doing that unless you happen to be that person. The Census Bureau also tracks broad things. So I think to Mr. Bennett's point, the average commute of a Danvers resident is like 28 minutes and change. It's going up, but 28 minutes means you're probably not going to Boston, on average, if your, if your commute's...
What's the average? So if they take 30 seconds?
Yeah, so you got, yeah, yeah, exactly. My wife goes to Jamaica Plain every day, so she makes up for several of us. But again, on average, it's about a 30-minute commute for the, for the typical resident. So this slide, and this goes back to thinking of the way we cut up our households and the age brackets or the income bands, however you want to cut that up. In that larger demographic roadshow that we've been doing, one thing we point out is typically when people say, well, what's a driver of community change? People will tell you, well, you're, you could be having babies, you could be passing away. We don't see a lot of that, at least not enough to affect the numbers. Then people usually jump to, well, you're building, you're going, you're building stuff. That's what's changing. Again, we're not really building heavy in eastern Massachusetts and not Danvers in particular. Where we think we're seeing the demographic change being driven from is in the number of housing sales that we do on any given year, of housing units that are already built. And so what this slide on the left shows us is the last 20 years of the number of sales that we see in a typical year. And right now, we're about 450 to 500, depending on how you want to slice it. So far this year, I think we're going to be right around that, you know, 450, 475 number. So the market's been great. Here's the prices over that time, the median sales price. I'm sorry, the, yeah, the average sales price. The mean sales price, not the median. Again, we track better than the county, better than the state. But in a weird way, this is almost like it's out of control, like the growth over the time, over this time. We have the data going all the way back to the late 80s. If you saw that, it kind of is flat around 150 for about 10 years. And then something happens in the late 90s, and it just starts going. And then obviously, we had a dip during the recession, and then boom, off we went again. And again, this is, this is a year to date, the 2019, but we don't expect that to flatline. We expect we will continue to track with the county and the state. And so again, I think for us as a community going forward and as it relates to a presentation like this, I think what we're seeing is changes being driven by the turnover in the housing stock. We generally are seeing older households without children being backfilled into their, their former home by a younger household with children. And that explains the change in the population because you had two, now you have four or five. It also changes income in that that household is generally earning a lot more than the household they replaced. So they kind of all kind of clump together, but this for us is really probably what's driving the most change in the community over the last 10, 20 years. So again, kind of looking ahead in what we think we're going to see on the economic side. We've been in the longest expansionary period of the US economy since we started tracking these things. Probably in for a cool-off. I just read a Doomsday article today about not a recession, but maybe a depression coming our way. Again, we'll see. I don't pretend to know all about it. I just read about it. But I do think most people are saying, would it expect some sort of flatlining and a little bit of a cooling off? What that does to housing prices, we will see. And again, we typically will do better in Massachusetts than the rest of the country will do. And as I've shown, generally speaking, we do better than the state on average as being, you know, a more affluent suburban community. And again, shameless tie-in and plug for some of the work we're doing in the land use department, thinking about making changes to some of the zoning that we have as we want to recalibrate that, given some of these trends and the decades-long, you know, basically, we've been on cruise control for a little while. And I think it's, you know, we want to make sure that we're being thoughtful and deliberate about recalibrating our zoning going forward to make sure that we're the community that we want to be. I think change is coming, whether you want to direct that change or let it happen to you. I'm in the camp of being proactive and trying to maybe kind of give it some prompts and push it in a certain direction so that we can control that rather than chance it. But again, that is my part of this presentation. And if there are no questions, I think Rodney goes next.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. As if my night wasn't dry enough. You do all the interesting stuff to lead us off. I apologize in advance for my voice. I'm not doing a bad Kermit impersonation. I have two small children, and you know what that leads to, lots of colds. So I appreciate you bearing with me. Now we into our financial condition analysis. These come from the ICMA guidelines. They touch on four, what we consider measures of financial condition. The first two are more of the short-term, cash solvency and budgetary solvency. It's a need to maintain cash flow in order to pay our bills and also ensure that annually we adopt a balanced budget. More of long-term measures of financial condition are the long-run solvency and the service-level solvency. Long run being liabilities such as pension, OPEB, debt, capital planning, and service-level solvency. Essentially, are we able to continue to provide the level of service that residents want and expect? Here we have our constant dollar calculation. Again, similar to years past, in slides that we deal in straight money, we try to adjust for the value of the dollar. One change we made this year is in previous years, we had taken a decade or two decades back and adjusted for inflation to show yesterday's dollar as it relates to 2019 in this case. What we've done is reverse that so that all the money appears in today's dollars and inflate it backwards. It still shows the same picture that a dollar today is worth less than a dollar yesterday, but I think it makes for an easier viewing experience when we're looking at $2,019 in a 2019 metric. In terms of what we're looking at with our financial indicators, we still have 13 indicators measuring trends across key areas. Much like last year, we made the change to adopt credit rating agency terminology. So when we're grading ourselves, we're using the stoplight feature, strong, stable, and weak. This is in line with what credit ratings agencies look at when they measure some of these same indicators. In terms of the breakdown, we have five revenue indicators, three expenditures, two reserves, and three liabilities. In terms of the benchmarks, again, it's the same benchmarks as we've had in previous years, selected for several reasons. Predominantly, their geographic proximity to Danvers and the Boston region, their community population, and their tax-based composition. And with that, we'll jump into the first financial indicator. So for revenues this year, we're breaking down the four major sources of revenue, property tax, state aid, local receipts, and... That's it. Three. Three. Property tax revenues, again, the longstanding practice of Danvers has been to provide level or expanded services without the use of either an override or a debt exclusion. Much like the overall revenue picture, it's crucial for property tax revenue to stay within the constraints of Proposition 2 and 1/2. As you'll see in some of the expenditure slides later, this becomes difficult when some of our fixed costs are increasing at a rate greater than 2 and 1/2 percent. The slide, as you'll see at the bottom, is adjusted for constant dollar. What we see is a pretty steady relative number. We also have unused levy capacity on the slide as well. For the most part, we are at or near our levy limit each year. So again, as we look at this figure moving forward in future years, it's stable for now, but as the fixed costs exceed 2 and 1/2 percent, it'll put pressure on the operating budget to manage within the revenue source available. Sure?
When you say, going back to the concept of dollars, it actually increases less, that's just saying, once you account for inflation, you're actually...
Exactly. So when we talk about we're going up 2 and 1/2 percent, in reality, it's less than 2 and 1/2 percent.
No.
Exactly, yep.
And 2 and 1/2, if you don't lose it, you can't get it back next year.
You can't, yep. So it stays within unused, so if you went 2 and 1/2, again, this is...
You go 2 and 1/2 a year, you're...
Theoretically, you go 2.0, yeah, it's not perfect math, but yeah, essentially, yes. You don't use, you don't lose that forever. Next, we're going to get into some benchmarks on property tax revenue, so I'm going to turn that over to our chief assessor, Steve Pulis, who's going to walk us through the next couple slides.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
How you doing? This one here, this is the benchmark of property tax revenues as a percentage of total revenues. And, you know, looking here, you can see Danvers is, you know, right in the middle of the large majority here, plus and minus 5 percent, starting with Stonem, going up to Linfield. Typically, it's, you know, what you'd expect to see, Peabody and Salem, you know, much larger community, different socio-economic factors, so they're going to receive a larger amount of state aid, and they don't depend, they don't have to depend on property tax revenues as extensively as the communities over here to the left. We are slightly above the state average.
Steve, before you leave that...
Yep.
That sounded to me very important.
Okay.
You're saying that Peabody and Salem, for example...
Yep.
...get a larger proportion of state aid than the town does. Could you expand on that, and why does that happen?
I think a large majority of it would be for the schools, Chapter 70 funding.
So, yeah, a number of the state aid categories are, the formulas are a function of the socioeconomic status in the community. So if you have, you know, the, the number of students on, on free reduced lunch is, does correlate to a certain extent with the Chapter 70 dollars that your community's going to use. The lower, the lower the community income generally, the higher the formula will allocate state aid. Salem in particular also has quite a few properties, Salem State, the courthouse, that would be, you know, that, some of the revenue from those would be coming in the form of, you know, cherry sheet offsets through the pilot from the state. So the, the, I think the point Steve was making, when you look at a Linfield, Linfield and Burlington and Andover generally have the higher, the highest incomes, per capita incomes on that slide, and so the, they're probably reducing, receiving less state aid, which is something we'll see in a couple of slides.
Thank you.
I would be so curious to see comparisons with communities that are a little bit more like Danvers, I mean, Linfield, not really, Andover, not really. But, for example...
Sally, can you describe what you mean by more like Danvers?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Norwood, just because it's...
Similar socio...
Similar size, similar profile...
Yeah, I think, I think we, yeah, no, I, I care what you're saying.
You know, it's apples to apples.
Locationally, I think these were selected...
Yeah, when...
...you know, based on similar size, I know, I know what you mean, but they're similar component size in some areas, and also locationally, they're very...
We did actually have Norwood on our, when we were developing this back in 2016, we started with a much larger list, because we wanted to look at communities, to, to your point, Sally, that were sort of like very similar to Danvers. And we, some of the filters we used were, and I, I always pick on Pittsfield, but we're less interested in what's happening in Pittsfield than, than we are what's happening, say, in Linfield, because we share a lot more in terms of, you know, job base, industry base with those communities. So it's, it's an art, not a science, but we want to make sure that we're sort of equidistant from Boston, looking at our immediate neighbors, and then communities that we share something in common. So Stonem and Wakefield are generally considered to be pretty good comps, but Norwood is also a pretty good comp. But we have to draw a line somewhere, and we could sort of, we could, we could look at reintroducing or shaking it up a little bit next year.
Is the source of this information publicly available?
Yeah, the, yeah, if you go on the, the department, yeah, the DLS gateway, and if you...
And each slide offers the source information. So every, every slide in the deck will offer where the, where the data is pulled from.
Yeah, the, the data bank is...
Okay, that's the DLS data bank, okay. Because on the next slide, I'd like to actually, similar to what Sally's saying, I'd like to look at surrounding communities. I'll take, I won't take it away, but on the next slide, it's, it's the, you know, average single-family tax bill. So...
All right, so let's get, get on to that. So here's the single-family average tax bill. I like to think of this kind of as, you know, a value indicator, when you're looking at a community to move to, you know, you're looking at how much is, what's your, what are your taxes each year are going to cost you, and what services do you get for, for your tax dollars? And, you know, so you're looking at things, you know, like trash pickup is a fee of service, there's included DPW service, parks, recs, various programmings that, that the municipalities offer. You know, Danvers, I think, shows that it's very competitive in, in this pack. The communities, the communities here that, that are slightly below, Peabody, Burlington, Salem, and, and Stonem, all shift outside of the pack. Well, Stonem has, Burlington has a huge commercial base, for one, and they, they, they're off the charts in the amount of annual new growth that they get.
39 percent commercial...
Yeah, and they shift, well, and they shift, right, so they, they have, they have like almost 40, I think you're right, 39 to 40 percent in commercial base, and they also shift to 1.6. And they're, they're actually the lowest, if you look at Peabody, Salem, Stone, and Stonem, they're all at 1.7 or, or above.
Is that average unit property tax bill, or average single?
Just single-family. Just, yeah, just the single, not condos, and it's just single-family. It doesn't include, you know, apartment buildings or anything, it's just single-family housing. And here's the breakdown of the assessed value by class. So basically, it's a split between your residential and commercial properties. Here, like we were talking before, Burlington, 39 percent, you know, which is huge. But Danvers actually, compared, looking at a peer group, you know, we're second only, only to Burlington, and, you know, that, that's pretty good. So Danvers is, is like, you think it's like Cherry Hill Drive and Rosewood, which you think of Peabody as being, you know, I think if I visualize Peabody, I think of them having a larger commercial base, but the fact is, they don't really have that type of, that type of tax base. They have the mall in that area, and then outside of that, it's a lot of, you know, industrial and mom-and-pop-type restaurants and, and things of that nature. So that, that's certainly a benefit of Danvers to have that, that commercial base to offset some of the tax burden.
Do you have any cages that help with the commercial base? You have any idea about what's happening with the businesses?
Yeah, I mean, we, well, we look at it as a percentage of valuation every year, this is the only look at every year, and we've gone back like 20 years, and what it shows is that the commercial base is, is strong and growing slowly. It's not, you know, it's not shrinking, it's just the commercial, the residential base has these large swings as the economy goes up and down, and the commercial has been pretty steady, steadily inclining over the past 20 years. It's a much straighter line, where the residential, you know, looks something like this, and the commercial base is just kind of like that.
And in recent years, we've seen, we've seen a shift toward residential, not because commercial's declining, but because it's not keeping pace with residential. So this past year, for example, I believe residential and commercial saw their values increase roughly the same percent, close to 6, but that's not been the case in recent years. So we've seen the commercial crease, commercial base grow, but not grow as fast as residential. So when you look at a slide like this, it appears that the commercial base is shrinking. And we were joking earlier, it just, it takes a good recession to recalibrate that ratio, because you'll see the residential values drop a lot faster in recession than the commercial do, so...
Is there any concentration, like the mall, like the owner of the mall, they have a big chunk of it?
No, our, when you, this is actually in the, it's, it's mentioned in the S&amp;P report, but we have a very diverse commercial base. So we, we don't have a single taxpayer that, I think, the mall is our largest taxpayer at a million dollars, and that's a very small piece of the overall picture. And same with the employment base.
All right, and then Rodney's going to continue on with the factors.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. So from property tax, now we'll transition to state aid. For recent years, our state aid has been relatively dependable, just over 10 percent as a percentage of our operating revenue over the past several years. That's pretty steady, as the current governor and the administration has tied state aid figures to increases in state revenue. We don't have to look too far back, although we stop at 2010. If many remember, 2008, 2009, state aid was cut, 9C cuts were enacted. So again, it's a solid figure for right now, but it's one that can be volatile at times. The other concern is that a drop in this figure could pose a variety of problems, particularly in the area of education, as a large portion of our state aid is tied to Chapter 70 funding. In terms of benchmarks, Danvers is in the mid-to-lower end of our benchmark communities. Again, to be expected, as I mentioned, on Chapter 70 aid, a community like Salem or Peabody is going to see, receive significant Chapter 70 aid, so that's going to skew their number as well. Again, more money from the state is always beneficial, but I think we're in a good position to weather a financial storm that would result in reduced state aid, as we're not as dependent on it as other communities. The third financial indicator is local receipts. Again, another steady figure, the outlook is stable here as well. Roughly 13 percent going back several years. You'll notice one spike in 2012. We did a major bond sale back in 2012. We incurred a little over a million-dollar premium back before municipal authorization. You could take that as a local receipt and basically do what you want with it. Now there are stricter rules. You can either reduce the amount you're actually borrowing, or put it towards future debt One thing to mention is, sorry...
Was this the slide where I was curious about how we never override, have never done an override, and whether it affects our ability, or how it affects our borrowing status for the bond rating agencies? I heard at one point, it works against that. They want to see the community willing to step up and override 2 and 1/2 when necessary. Here we are, almost in that one, I think. I don't think there are many communities that have never done an override, but am I in line?
I mean, it's, it's a good question, not necessarily, but I mean, it's a good question.
Yeah, this, that's...
I wasn't going to say that.
And I almost think it must be in spite of the failure to override 2 and 1/2.
Well, this, the, the, the rating that we had this past summer, S&amp;P spent some time talking about that very point that you raised, Sally, and they said that they, they do. They viewed it for a long time as a negative factor, because the presumption is you're, if you're not doing that, you must be deferring maintenance, or avoiding investment, or essentially starving your budget. And certainly, this board's predecessors, our predecessors, through tools like the School Stabilization Fund, where they would build up, and this is a revenue category where we generally budget to exceed expectation for two reasons. One, it's where the free cash gets generated to fund those reserves, and two, when the economy turns, you don't want to be budgeting your best-case scenario here, because if this comes up short, then you have a real, you have a budget, you have a structural problem in your budget. So we, I think the case was made this time that Danvers has avoided using overrides by being very conservative in their projections, and in turn, reinvesting those, those proceeds into reserves rather than spending them on additional employees or additional equipment and things like that. So it's, they finally accepted the argument that it's been by design. So we've done all the things all the other towns have done, and we've done it through fiscal conservatism.
I would only add that, they would have a much stronger concern if it got to the point where we were reducing services versus doing an override. That would be where they would be concerned, which Danvers never historically has reached that point.
Do they look for an explanation of how they do it?
Always. Next, we look at economic growth. Local receipts in general is predicated on, on the whims of the economy to some extent. The biggest driver of, just to move back for a second, of local receipts is our motor vehicle excise. We also capture our hotel motel, our meals tax, as well as building permits, which we're going to dive in on, on the next slide. But again, we've always ultra-conservatively budgeted these, as the manager mentioned, to increase our free cash position, but also to guard against a downturn in the economy. If there were to be a downturn, we're in a comfortable position that should motor vehicle excise dip a little bit, sure, should meals dip a little bit, they would come down to where we're ultimately conservatively budgeting anyways, as opposed to us overestimating and be caught flat-footed and not hit our revenue targets. When we look at economic growth revenue, we look at two key figures. One is our overall new growth each year, and one is our building permit revenue. There's not a direct correlation, but generally speaking, you would see the building permit revenue translate into the new growth. That's not an exact science, but generally, that's what we would see. Again, we conservatively budget and project our new growth in building permit fees each year. We try to target a baseline of, if there were no big projects, no major constructions, what we could anticipate in just general new growth and building permit revenue. And so you'll see some spikes in some years where we had some large projects, and those become pretty self-evident. I believe 2015 was Kirk Pride. In recent years, we've also had Total Wine's personal property, new growth was a big factor. So again, we like to conservatively estimate this and hope that if we have a bang-out year, that that just falls to free cash where we can invest. The next slide is new growth as a percentage of the prior-year levy limit. Generally, Burlington, you'll see is significantly higher, as Steve touched on earlier, they have a very strong commercial base. However, the other majority of the communities are all within that 1 to 2 percent new growth. This is just a snapshot in time, however. So while we're on the lower side in FY18, FY19's data, it's largely big project-driven. So a perfect example would be Linfield. I would say 99 of 100 years, you're going to see Linfield all the way on the right as far as new growth. If we had done this a few years ago when Market Street opened, they would have been ahead of Burlington. So again, I think one of the things we've looked at is maybe next year, trying to get a wider grasp, maybe doing like a three- or five-year look back on new growth in comparison with the other communities. Next, we have uncollected property tax. We have a very strong outlook here. This is due in part to the affordability of property taxes in Danvers, as well as the effectiveness, effectiveness of the Treasury Collector's Office in collection. You'll see a spike back in 2014 and a little tick-up in 2016. Those were reduced as part of payoffs related to Folly Hills subdivision, as well as another large tax bill payoff from the Recovery Center of America. It's worth noting, noting that when we talk about these percentages, which are, if you look across the Commonwealth, very solid percentages, the uncollected tax, the uncollected taxes aren't lost revenue. We never lose the ability to collect this. The town has a variety of methods to secure our standing, most notably the tax title process. That said, though, 1.8 percent in 2019, as you can see, is a low watermark, due in part, like I said, to the Treasury Collector's Office, but also due to the strong economic conditions we are, see ourselves in. One anecdotal note that Joe Collins mentioned the other day is that we're seeing, a lot of banks are still continuing to pay the taxes even if the homeowner falls in arrears, the thought being that they have a vested interest in this property, so they don't want to fall behind, because ultimately, the town's position supersedes theirs, so they want to make sure that they stay on top of the tax bill, which benefits us as well. Next, we look at expenditures per capita. You'll see mostly steady on the service side. Small note, this figure does include capital outlay. However, you see a steady number each year, and if you look at the expenditures per capita, which is adjusted for constant dollar, an interesting fact, when adjusting for constant dollar, from 2010 to 2019, you only see an April... when adjusting for constant dollar, from 2010 to 2019, you only see an 8% increase in cost per capita. I think that goes to the conservative budgeting practices of the town, as well as the efficient operations of the town as well. So again, an outlook of stable here as well. You'll see some of the fixed costs, which we touch on in later slides, are the ones that are more of a pressure point. We talked about pensions and healthcare as rising beyond the 2.5%.
So why is this outlook stable, yellow? I would think stable's a good thing, or is the intent that we want to increase?
So strong would be green. Stable is yellow, and red is weak, to use a stop-line analogy. I think it would be a tough position to, with the fixed costs rising, to call this a strong indicator, just because the fixed costs are rising in excess of 2.5%. I think if you strip those out, then I would consider our position strong. In terms of benchmark, we look at total expenditures per capita across the peer communities. Again, middle of the pack. One thing worth noting, though, is it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison. So if a community, for example, had water or sewer as part of their tax rate, if they didn't have trash within their levy, but completely outsourced the trash operation to a private contractor who billed directly to the residents, all of these would skew the numbers. So I think community versus community is a tough comparison. I think, however, in the aggregate, we're the town's in a good position relative to its peers. Financial indicator seven is another strong indicator. It's salary and wages as a percent of net operating procedure expenditures. As you'll see over the past 10 years, relatively stable number, right around that 56% mark. The ratio remained flat through the most recent round of collective bargain agreements. There's two ways in particular for this metric to rise and be a concern. One would be salary adjustments increasing at a rate greater than overall expenditures. The other would be new positions being added. So this metric, I think, speaks to the town's ability to provide affordable but fair cost-of-living increases, and also limiting the number of new positions added.
Does this include pension costs?
It does not. However, a positive trend here would lead to a more positive trend, or at least curb the growth of OPEB and pension as well. Indicator eight involves benefits. This is a benefits to salary and wages ratio. While it only appears to be increasing modestly, this is still a warning indicator, because it says a ratio of salaries and wages, so it's making up a greater percent of the overall budget. We believe it's a stable, as this is pretty common throughout the Commonwealth right now. The benchmarks on the next slide provide a clearer sense of where we are in relation to our peer communities. So we've made some recent changes to the healthcare. We've mentioned a lot that the trend is 8% to 10%. The town's had success in negotiating renewal rates at around 5% the past several years, as well as minor plan changes. I think those stemmed, the increased a little bit, but again, still not sustainable for the long term. Yeah.
So the general government has sold salaries for 2019, it's 54.5 million. The benefits are 23% of that?
Yes. No, sorry, so it's a ratio. It's comparing what our benefits budget is versus the amount we pay in salaries. So ideally, they would be at the same percentage year over year. The only reason that percentage would increase is because the cost of benefits is increasing at a higher rate than the cost of salaries.
So you're showing it as a percentage. What is 23.4%?
So it's a ratio of the healthcare budget versus total salaries paid.
Rodney, I think the question, the $12.6 million in benefits is divided by the 54 million, and that yields the 23%. And I think that, is that...
So the 12 divided into the 54 gets you the 23.
Now, would you choose the healthcare plan versus whatever metric you want? How much more out of the budget would you ask on the town employees?
So we're, the plan design changes that we've been talking about in the last couple of budget cycles are going to take effect next July 1st. And so the plan that the majority of active employees will go to is a benchmark plan, which is, which mirrors the most popular plan on the GIC. So it introduces $500 individual deductibles and $1,000 family deductibles. And the premiums are decreasing on average by around 2.5%. So there is a net increase, but the deductibles are mitigated by the lower premium. So it's, that's sort of an impossible question on a case-by-case basis, the answer.
In terms of the benchmark, we look at healthcare costs as a percent of total expenditures. Again, sort of middle of the pack. I think it's a good metric to look at our comparison to other communities. The bigger concern is how that 12% trends over time. So making sure that that doesn't increase to 13%, 14%, 15%, because now you're eating into the other areas of the operating budget. Another strong indicator, and one that S&amp;P in their most reading, most rating, recent rating hit upon, is a very strong position for the town, is its reserves and free cash position. So the metric is free cash and stabilization funds as a percent of net operating expenditures. We look at free cash after appropriation at annual town meeting. We add in the general stabilization, the smaller educational stabilization fund, and then the school building stabilization. As you can see from the graph, it shows the intended use of the school stabilization fund relative to the high school project in the mid-part of the decade, as well as the gradual rebuilding of the fund as we move into the Smith School project. The goal moving forward would be, as we use the school building stabilization fund to shave that debt peak related to the Smith School, is to continue to add to the general stabilization fund to maintain our strong cash position. Again, another metric that comes into play particularly in times of an economic downturn.
Can you give an example of when the town might move to reach into the million and a half general stabilization funds?
Hopefully never. But again, it would be a policy perspective, but the idea would be to never have to reach into that unless there were a dire economic turn, such as another 2008, 2009. Generally, when we talk about the planned use, it'd be the school stabilization fund that we would plan to use as part of shaving debt. General stabilization is really supposed to be your emergency, break glass in case of emergency, don't-touch fund.
And I would note, when we look across the table here, up until 2016, the practice at town meeting had been to appropriate free cash into the general stabilization fund, and then immediately appropriate it out to pay for cash capital. And something that changed from 16 to 17, we started to appropriate the cash capital directly from free cash and make a concerted effort to recommend to the selectmen in the finance committee in town meeting that we start to use the general stabilization fund exactly as Rodney described it, which was eventually as the majority of the town's fund balance and reserves, which would be used, you know, again, if there's a recession and there's a, or a sharp economic decline, and we don't want to have a major disruption to services, you would be able to utilize those funds to weather that period. That would not be sustainable year after year, but that's, that would be an example of when it would make sense to lean on the reserves. And that number next year will be $3 million, because at the, noted at the beginning of the presentation, the town meeting supported moving 1.5 million from free cash into that account this year.
A similar strong metric is the unassigned fund balance. Free cash is more of a snapshot in time. The unassigned fund balance is the independently audited, generally-accepted accounting status of the undesignedated funds that the town maintains. Our target is, as you can see from the top and bottom line, red lines, is to stay between 8% and 12% of total general fund expenditures. We're happy to report that since 2014, we've stayed within that range. 2019, a particular note is at 10.1%. That's good news, because it shows that our planning process worked. We left our 1% in free cash coming out of last town meeting. Town meeting also appropriated 1.5 million, as the manager mentioned, into general stabilization, which again, because it's not set aside for any particular use, counts as part of our unassigned fund balance. So we think this is a good metric as well. One thing I would point out, we see the asterisk, and that's to let us know that the audited financial statements aren't final. However, I'm happy to report that we're more confident in that number than we probably have been in several years. That's to in large part to the work of the town accountant and town meeting supporting, bringing a consultant in to work on some timelines and end-of-year procedures. We have a draft CAFR from Melantin Heath coming in the next week or two. Our balance sheet has already been submitted, so we're in a very good position as far as closing out FY19. So I wanted to give the accounting office kudos on that. You don't have deja vu, this is the exact same slide as last year. The reason being is that our full valuation occurs every other year. Our next one will be up in January 1st, 2020. As terms of pension percentage funded, we're still at the 58.6%, which we consider to be stable at this point. It's worth noting that during this time, we've made a couple of key changes. We've reduced our fully funded date from 2036 to 2035. We've also lowered our assumed rate of return on our investment from 8% down to 7.5%. Both are sound strategies in reducing this liability. One thing we can update this year is in terms of investment performance. 2018 had a negative result, as did virtually every retirement system in Massachusetts. However, 2019 has been a good comeback year. Through October, year-to-date, we've earned 13.21%, so 2019 has been a positive year.
Does this reflect the Electric Division's recent actions?
It does not. So when we do our full valuation in 2020, that'll reflect the $4.2 million paydown of Electric, which again, on Electric's side reduces their liability to zero, but also helps the overall percent funded as well.
Why do we know that the pension is 14.4%?
So we have a funding schedule in place. So every two years, when we do the full valuation, we'll look at our liability.
Oh, that's, so that's the assessment to the town.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. No, yeah. So in 2020, we'll have a new liability, and the Danvers Retirement Board will work on their funding schedule, yeah. This next slide we've had in recent years, which is a benchmark of percent funded. Much like Danvers, most of these communities will see their valuation change in 2020. I think the next slide kind of breaks out where we are in relative to these communities a little bit better. So there are four key pieces that PARAC looks at when they look at the status of your pension fund. One is the percent funded, one is your most recent valuation date, what your assumed rate of return is, what you hope to generate from your investment, and when you expect to be fully funded. As we can see, we're generally around the average in all these categories amongst the benchmarks. We're a little ahead on pension percentage funded, a little bit higher on our assumed rate of return, and a little bit behind the average fully funded date. The decision for the Danvers Retirement Board, working in conjunction with the town, will be how to weigh these various factors as we head into the new valuation and resetting the funding schedule. Again, a good position to be in, but as we talk about pressure points, we're expecting an 8% increase each year over the next several years, and then it'll drop to 4% for the remaining last several years before we're fully funded, so. OPEB liability, this isn't a perfect metric, but it's worth touching on. And when we say we're weak, that's the Commonwealth as a whole is weak, in part due to the benefits we provide our communities compared to other states around the country. However, when we get into a ratings agency meeting for a rating, we're compared against every other town throughout the nation. So although it's weak here, we're in a very similar position to other communities in Massachusetts. Our unfunded actuarial accrued liability as of 6/30/2018 is $180 million. The next full valuation will be June 30th, 2020. The only two real methods to address this liability are increasing the contribution and investment earnings, or by reducing the costs. However, the $6.6 million in our current OPEB trust is definitely a positive, and it's one that the ratings agency, although they view this as a credit negative, was a very positive development in the recent years, as we've increased our contribution each year to the OPEB trust. Debt service, we see that high bar at the top is 10%. That's the town policy, to stay under 10% of our total expenditures. Danvers historically stays well below that threshold, in part. One of the major ways we do that is, as we mentioned, capital outlay. So through generating free cash by ultra-conservatively estimating our local receipts, we generate free cash, which we can then turn around and invest in some of our capital expenditures, such as heavy equipment and vehicles, that otherwise would have to go out for debt service. When we did the math recently, over the past decade, the amount of money the town has invested in capital outlay through free cash would add another full percent to this figure if we had to go out and bond it and pay interest on it, so. Again, a strong outlook, funding the capital outlay, and being prudent in what debt we take on has an impact on all four of the measures of financial condition we talked about earlier, both in the cash and budgetary, short-term of our annual operating budget, as well as liabilities of long-term debt and maintaining our service solvency. So this is a good metric to be good on, yes. And in terms of benchmarks, we, again, we see that we're relatively speaking in a very good position relative to our peer communities.
Next slide. So to start off the wrap-up, this is the slide that was updated from last year's presentation. Really, these four budget categories represent the four largest cost drivers that we have that are increasing faster than the 2.5% that we use as our threshold in the annual budget process. The retirement contribution, which Mr. Conley referenced, healthcare, we talked a little bit about benefits as a percent of salaries, and a number of the boards in the room know that we've been actively engaged with the Insurance Advisory Committee over the past year to look at ways to rein that cost in come July 1st. The schools, 3.1% in the school community is actually a very modest increase, but as a portion of our budget, it still represents a large cost driver each year. And Essex Tech, as you can see, they've been averaging 9.5% increases on their assessment, and it's a success story. They have a good school, and Danvers kids have been interested in the programs that they've offered there. So we've seen our assessment increase over the past few years. These four categories, for those doing math, you know, we, looking ahead next year, and frankly, the same this year, the levy capacity and new growth comes in at around $2.6 million. Those four categories added together are $2.6 million, which means that all of the costs for materials and equipment, salaries and wages, the service contracts that we have in place for some of our buildings, come through increases in local receipts, state aid, other budget categories. We don't want to paint too dismal of a picture. We are in a relatively strong position, that was acknowledged by the rating agencies this summer, but we're in a somewhat vulnerable position. You know, we've done well, the economy's been good, and I think, you know, what we got credit for this summer was being disciplined during good times, because oftentimes, when the revenue is coming in, communities tend to spend more than they should, and that ends up costing them in the long term. And we've used the last five years to strengthen our position, as opposed to, you know, grow and take on expenses that may not be sustainable. Go to the next slide. This is an update of a slide we looked at last year. The yellow box on the left, one of the objectives that the board's selectmen adopted at their last meeting as a priority this year was to begin looking seriously at a consolidated public works yard for the community. This has been a placeholder in the capital plan for many, many years. As you can see, we have our public works department is spread out at Hobart Street, Borough Street, North Putnam Street, Sylvan Street, Canal Street, and actually in Middleton at the Water Treatment Plant. The Canal Street property that should be open this spring to house the Water and Sewer Commission, or Water and Sewer Divisions, was always viewed as a temporary solution. And, you know, we need to look at, we have a placeholder in the CIP of $25 million, but that's really nothing more than a placeholder. The process we need to start involves site selection, evaluating what to do with our current properties, figuring out what sort of facility would be required, and then forming a committee to look at that. The green column, school renovations. Top of that list, of course, is Smith School. The project is underway. I don't think we could have asked for a better start to that project. We maximize our MSBA reimbursement at 55% of eligible costs. We had very successful debt issuance this summer, and we had three major bids open last month, being steel, concrete, and site work. All of them came in on budget, which was an early concern that we had, given some of the volatility in terms of tariffs and noise. So we have some key bids coming up, but right now, knock on wood, things are going well there. We completed the Highlands Roof School Project this year. We had a, not to exceed cost of $3.2 million on that project, and it came in at around $2.9 million. MSBA will cover half of... MSBA will cover half of that cost through their accelerated repair program, but we know that there's always more coming. Riverside Roof is going to be due in the next couple of years, and we have three elementary schools that were renovated in the early 90s that are going to be due for, probably not expansion, but some sort of renovations in the coming years, just given the age of the facility and the wear and tear that, you know, six-to-12-year-olds can inflict on a building. And then the last column, or a house for that matter. The quality, what we kind of describe as the quality-of-life projects, these are the projects that, while not necessarily critical to the infrastructure of the community, although you can make the case that dredging is, these are the nice-to-do projects. The one that's probably furthest advanced on this list would be the Haybarn Project, where we have a committee that's looking at an opportunity right now to preserve and make that space available to the public for about 35 cents on the dollar, thanks to a Mass Works grant, and some revenue projections that would offset some of the costs, but that's certainly one of many projects that are sort of in the hopper. The LaBelle's Grove property, we have conceptual site plan done for that, and now it's, in the coming years, it'll be a question of prioritizing the amenities there and how to fund those. Rail trail expansion, town meeting has been supportive of that project, and we have design documents nearing completion for the first phase of that project, which would connect two schools and about 500 single-family homes to the downtown, where it would meet the existing trail. Open space acquisition has been a long-term priority for the community. We still have bond authorization left from a previous round of town meeting votes, and we're actively working with the Danvers Alarm List to talk about protecting the Rebecca Nurse Homestead, which was one of the top priorities in the open space plan. And of course, the dredging, you know, we're probably five to seven years, within the next five to seven years, we're going to need to do that, and that is not an inexpensive project. That will be somewhere, you know, in the neighborhood of $5 to $8 million when the time comes. We do carry, you know, the good news on these is that we do carry $1 to $2 million a year in our debt schedule for projects that come along, like the Haybarn Project, like the school roof that may not have been in a capital plan, but we want to make sure as we look ahead on debt service that we have some flexibility to accommodate projects that nobody saw coming. But certainly, when we're talking about something like a public works yard, now you need to approach that project the way you would approach a Smith School. That requires, you know, planning ahead, because, you know, although a school is more expensive to build, MSBA generally covers half the cost of that, so you're looking at about the same impact on your debt schedule for a public works facility as you would for a new school, in terms of the Danvers tax, from the Danvers taxpayers' perspective. Go to the next slide. So to wrap it all up, you know, this last slide lays out some of the work we've done and some of the work ahead to ensure that our financial condition remains strong. I like this quote because I think it captures the essence of what we've been trying to achieve the last five years, and certainly what our predecessors aimed to accomplish before we got here. You know, I'll be the first to note that the, not all of the actions bulleted on this slide are particularly sexy, but they do, they will prove to be vital when the next, you know, when this period of unprecedented growth starts to slow or reverse itself. You know, we, by monitoring our, and managing our reserves, managing our headcount, and offering, you know, fair but sustainable budgetary increases for salary and wages, being proactive in terms of addressing cost drivers like healthcare, and planning ahead with our capital expenses, we've been able to maintain a pretty, you know, it's a delicate fiscal balance, but we've been able to maintain that, offering what, you know, the community has described to be quality services for, I think objectively what the data supports as being a relatively good value in terms of an average property tax bill. I'll share a quote, at our first summit, we shared the philosophy of retired manager from a county in Virginia who said, you know, he believed that their local government could do anything but not everything, and I think that that rings true here in Danvers. I think that what we do, we do well, but we also recognize that we have limited resources, and we have to maximize in order to, in order to be successful. So just very briefly, you know, we've talked a couple of points tonight, we are looking at, we're finalizing some healthcare changes right now that will be in effect for the budget process that we're going to start in March. We're working the light board to update the electric pilot payment for the first time since 1995. We're evaluating our hours of operation against the region to see if there are budgetary savings to be squeezed out there. We're going to, we're going to make an effort in this budget process to start to shift some of the appropriations that have historically been purely free cash for things like our OPEB and our capital into the levy, if we can find capacity to do that, because those are critical to fund, and the free cash is a very volatile funding source. Again, you know, continuing to grow the stabilization, we need to comply with those policies that we've adopted, and certainly we want to maintain the rating that we just, that we just achieved this past summer. And I would, I would hazard to say that we're not doing too bad on time, we're only 18 minutes off of where we thought we'd be. I think we're all suffering from dry mouth from talking a million miles an hour, but I think we'd be happy to take any questions or hear any thoughts before we wrap up this year's summit.
Thank you, Steve. So, board members, any questions, David, comments?
The comment is that this is a phenomenally well-put-together-and-presented picture of our town's financial situation and what we have to look forward to. Well done. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, no?
I asked for the source of this information, and I'm glad that we can look at it, because I think one of the incredibly difficult things to do is try to give the, an appropriate overview when all of us have different lenses. You know, some of us want to know about married couples, and, you know, family sizes, and ages, and demographics, and whatever it is that's more, most pertinent to us. I think that you've given a great overview, chosen the right numbers and presentations, and anybody who wants to go and find their specific focal interest has a source to do that. I'm very happy with the report and very happy with the financial position of the town. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
I just feel it's a reflection of our planning that we've taken over the years, the planning that we were able to assume from our forefathers, who left us a pretty good basis for a tax base in our community, but also to the forward-looking staff that Steve's been able to assemble since he's been hired as town manager. We have a new generation of leadership in this town, which is very interesting, and I think very appropriate, very competent, to continue our situ, to continue the practices we've had in the past. We looked to many people in the past who helped to devise this, and it's why we are in the position we're in now. And I'm very happy that you people from the Citizens Academy were able to be here tonight, because you guys are being exposed to so much information in a short period of time that probably in five or six months, you've had access to more information than some of us has, have had over 50 years, or we've had to dig for it to get it. So we're looking to see you be, you be the next leaders in our community, and I hope all of you are running for office for something next year. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job, and keep it up. Steve, you did a good job, you've got a good crew behind you, and I think that all these figures we talked about tonight are reliable, unlike our last meeting, so.
Thank you, Bill. So I want to thank the FENCOM School Committee, Library for coming and attending, asking your questions today. I think this is very productive, so that we're all on the same page. We know what our issues are, our problems, our success stories. So thank you for coming. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentations. Steve, thank you for putting this together. It's very informative and beneficial as we move forwards. I want to thank everybody.
I would note, this is, if it's not already on the website, it will be on the web, this presentation will be on the website, and beyond that, any of us would be happy to sit down and talk to anybody about anything that we went over tonight.
Very good. So we'll take a brief recess of five minutes, so if there's any seat changes to be made, now's the time to do it. You're welcome to stay for the next portion. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Steve, when you post this, can you post the link?
Regular meeting of the selectmen, and would I have a pledge of allegiance from Goddard?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we can have an approval of the minutes of November 19th?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we're going to take the agenda out of order. I want to recognize our Citizens Academy graduates at this time. Mr. Bartha?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm looking around for Ms. Breaker.
Jen, she's hiding over there.
So we, we have, the Assistant Town Manager, Jen Breaker, really ran this program, so I don't want to steal too much of her thunder, but this was something that we have been talking about launching in Danvers for some time, and really, Jen took the initiative this year and put it together. She worked with some colleagues within the state, as well as sort of digesting some materials through the ICMA, which is the International City and County Manager Association, in terms of how to put these together, and really, it's set up like a, almost like a college curriculum, where the cadets, as we're calling them, applied to participate in the program, and then went through a weekly sort of seminar with each of the major departments in town. And I want to stop there because I know Jen has something to say as well, so.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Jen Breaker, I'm the Assistant Town Manager here. Most of you know me. Tonight, I'm here, and I'm really excited to be here, to recognize our first graduating Citizens Academy class. We've prepared a brief PowerPoint to highlight some of the work the cadets completed this year, and I'm going to pray it works. Citizens Academy was developed as a way for residents to take a 10-week deep dive into their local government. Participants, who we kindly call cadets, explored various town departments through classes and interactive activities. Applications were submitted over the summer, we received over 35 applications, and we accepted 20 individuals to participate in the first class. And for the most part, all 20 of them showed up every week. Preference was given to Danvers residents, but consideration was given to applicants that didn't live in Danvers but worked in Danvers. In this first class, we had cadets that have lived in Danvers for over 74 years, all the way down to somebody who has lived here for one year. The class was made up of teachers, a financial advisor, a fresh market supervisor, an IRS tax examiner, a mothers' against drunk-driving employee, retirees, a reporter, just to name a few. Starting on September 12th and going through November 21st, the academy was held on Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:30 in several locations around Danvers. Dinner was provided to the cadets each week from a different pizza establishment in Danvers. We never repeated, and we ate a lot of pizza. Before we dive into what the cadets did each week, we have to thank the many employees of the town of Danvers who made the academy possible. This includes employees who presented, worked on presentations, activities, helped set up, ordered the pizza each week so I didn't forget, made sure the, and made sure the academy was a huge success. We wouldn't have an academy without all of these names up here. On September 12th, the cadets joined staff right here in the Tumi Room for their first night of Citizens Academy. Welcome bags awaited them on their chairs. Inside the bags were their binders that had presentations for each week and supporting material, along with other items, a budget book, an annual town report, trash and recycling information, recreation flyers, and light bulbs. Cadets were welcomed by Chairman Bennett, and then dove right into a general town government overview from the town manager. After a dinner break, they received a crash course in municipal finance. We covered assessing, accounting, retirement, and we tried to cover budgeting. We tried to cover budgeting three times and failed all three times because we ran out of time. So hopefully, they got a bit of it tonight. The cadets were shown how to calculate vehicle excise tax and annual taxes on various types of property. The second week took the cadets to the fire department headquarters. They heard from Chief Pyburn, Captain Brooks, and Captain Berry on all aspects of the department, including technology used to assist the department in their daily duties. They went on a tour, one cadet tried on turnout gear, and they got to see the tower truck in action. One cadet said that it was a fascinating session. They were impressed with the use of technology behind the equipment. They were impressed with the use of technology behind the equipment and that Chief Pyburn's passion comes through in his presentation. The cadets headed over to the Danvers High School in Week 3. They were greeted by Superintendent Lisa Dana, Assistant Superintendent Keith Taverner, and School Committee Chair Mary Beth Barry. The night started with a social emotional learning exercise called "Not My Problem", then a district overview that covered topics like cost of pupil, strategic planning, student engagement, and core curriculum. Then the cadets got to experience different activities that shared with them what goes on in the different levels of the Danvers education. Teachers from the elementary school took them through a words their way activity where I learned "I don't know how to spell". Middle school teachers demonstrated how they're teaching math, and the night ended with a sample of the DECA program. In Week 4, things were a bit different. The electric department garage bays became our classroom. The IT department kicked off the night and covered the work they do to maintain our technology, how many emails we send and receive each week, and recent and future projects. Civil engineering highlighted the work they do for the community and other town departments. Civil engineering also challenged cadets to build a water tower, an activity that became a favorite of the academy. Cadets were challenged to construct towers in teams that were judged for height and needed to be strong enough to hold a small cup of water. They all succeeded. The electric division shared the power portfolio for Danvers, simplified our power grid, and discussed energy, conservation, and efficiency programs. They finished the night with a power safety demonstration. As cadets hit the halfway point of the academy, they had a full night, hearing from the town clerk in the treasure collector's office and learning about voting and town meeting. The cadets calculated bond anticipation notes and reviewed precinct maps. During dinner, members of a few boards and committees talked about the important work they do. Then it was on to the library, learning about the many services the library offers in addition to books, such as events and art galleries. Town archivist Richard Trask was a big hit. Cadets said that his enthusiasm was infectious and that they could listen to him for hours. Unfortunately, Mother Nature got in our way on Week 6. With most of the town without power, we had to cancel class. However, we quickly got to rearranging the remaining weeks to ensure we were able to cover almost all of the planned material. In Week 7, the academy was held at Endicott Park. The cadets heard from some of the divisions of the Land Use and Community Services Department. Zoning maps were dissected, public health helped cadets earn a lead paint determinator license, and Peter Morandi highlighted how the town supports veterans. Set up in the senior center, the cadets took a pop quiz about the needs of our seniors in the community, and the answers were discussed throughout their presentation. Things such as programs and services offered at the senior center and how many of the programs rely on volunteers, from transportation to the food pantry. Next, the divisions of recreation presented to the cadets, and things got very interactive. After hearing about Harbors Fun Club in Endicott Park, the cadets were challenged to a fun and a bit different game of Jeopardy. During Week 9, Chief Ambrose welcomed the cadets to the police department and offered an overview of the department that included statistics and community needs that the department addresses. The Criminal Investigation Division took cadets behind the scenes and discussed how they work to solve crimes committed in Danvers and other communities. Cadets saw photos from crime scenes and officers walked them through some of the case details. The Community Services Division shared the work and challenges they encounter, including various programs they offer in the Danvers Public Schools. And finally, the cadets got to meet Strika of the K-9 Unit.
He knows what's going on, he's like, "Yeah, we're gonna get some air." So, I can fire him up, and he should bark, so be prepared for some barking. And then I'll tell him to be quiet, so I can communicate with the bad guy, and then we'll go for a run. What? Quiet. So we need to make sure that the bad guy can hear my commands. So we can fire the dog up when it barks, let the bad guy know, "Hey, my dog's gonna bite you", right? And then I need to be able to shut him off so that I can actually have a conversation with the bad guy so he knows exactly what I'm looking for, right? I need to see your hands, so my dog is gonna bite you. So I'm just gonna walk Strika in, he's gonna present the sleeve, and Strika's gonna bite us, okay? And so if it bites the whole dog, so he'll bite and hold, and this pressure will just get stronger and stronger on that bite until I tell him to let go or until he gets his point come on, which is gonna be the sleeve, because he's gonna let go eventually, right? But if, say, Cory was to fight him and beat him up a little bit, then the dog may come off and re-bite somewhere else. But for the most part, he'll stay on that same spot so that the injury is just localized there.
The final week of Citizens Academy brought the cadets back to the Tumi Room where the DPW explained how their divisions run. Cadets took a fun pop quiz on what can and cannot be recycled, discussed tree varieties in Danvers, heard from the building division on maintenance, and took a trip outside to see some equipment. They also had the quickest review of water and sewer materials ever. And that brings us to tonight. The graduating cadets have worked really hard. They've showed up every Thursday, they've asked great questions, they've engaged in discussions and group work, and they've made us proud to serve them and the Danvers community. Before we recognize the cadets, we would be happy to take any questions from the board or if any of the cadets would like to offer any feedback on the program, the microphone is all yours.
Any cadets want to say anything? No, okay. Bill, comments?
No, I'm just fascinated by this whole concept, and I hope it's the beginning of a very successful program for the future. And I hope that we have at least one class every year that goes through this. Because you people are the resources we have for the future, as I alluded to earlier. And I hope to see all of you at least running for town meeting member. If not, there's a selectman's position open next year and many others in town. Plus, we have about 300 volunteer positions in various boards in town that Steve or us name. And I hope that you take a very active role in your community. It's always been instilled in me, it was by my parents. You give back to your community, you participate in your community. You cannot complain about your community unless you want to take a proactive role yourself. Good luck, thank you very much for doing it.
Thanks, Bill. Goddard?
This is great, this is fantastic. I wish I had known about it, I might even take it. There are, you know, aspects, even being a citizen volunteer for as long as most of us have here, there are aspects of the town we don't delve into or don't get hands-on participation in. And I think this is, the 10 weeks, the nine weeks that you had were fantastic. And I envy you the opportunity to see some of the things I've yet to see. You know, turnout gear and the police demonstration was fascinating. And, you know, and I think that, I'll agree with the Selectman Clark, that I hope this is a catalyst for some of you to become even more involved in the community. And in whatever manner you can in supporting it, it's one of our, you know, individually, our passion is to be here to help the community. This isn't a glory job, this isn't, it's about doing things that make Danvers a better place. And I don't mind spending my time doing it, and I'm glad you spent your time doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Dan. Congratulations, graduates. And Jen, congratulations to you for coordinating this program. As I'm sitting here and saying what a wonderful experience for the students, I'm thinking, what a wonderful experience for our town department people who took part in this. To know that they're appreciated, to know that their work is important, for them to know that somebody else in the town cares about what they're doing. So this is like, to me, it's like the beginning of a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful continuing program of community enrichment all around. And Goddard, you don't just go, you have to apply. So... So Goddard and I will apply for the next academy.
Great.
Wonderful job, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Town Manager, would you send our thanks to all the folks, the staff that worked with these kids? I say kids, Citizens Academy cadets.
And I think I saw a hand from the audience with a question.
When I'm done?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So please extend the board's thanks to all those folks. Did somebody have a hand up? Please.
Alan McCarren.
To the microphone, Alan.
All right.
Let the folks at home know who you are.
Yeah, so part of your training should be, when you're here in the room, we're on cable. And when we're on cable, people want to hear you, so we have the mic at the back of the room.
Alan McCarren, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. I just want to say that it sounds like a great program, and I'd love to attend it sometime.
So be sure to apply. Thank you, Jen. Job well done, and what's your next thing on the program?
We are gonna ask that Joe Collins reads the names of the graduates. We're gonna invite yourself and the town manager up. Graduates, when you hear your name, come on up to get your certificate.
Very good.
Thank you.
Turn the lights on.
Dan, Bill Bradstreet has his hand up.
Mr. Bradstreet? Thank you, David.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. As far as involvement for different departments in the town, I think the town manager can express his turnout gear involvement in firefighting. It's too bad that wasn't mentioned. Well, at least you got involved.
What's up? Tori Adler?
Tori, congratulations.
Thank you.
Put them in order.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Andres Castano? Joseph DeFranco? Ryan Griffiths? Alexander Grover? Sharon Gaddara? Jill Hamazinski-Bullier? Mary Kate DePamphylis? Patricia Keen? Brittany Kresnag Glazov? Marianne Marshall Valaire? Anne Miraglia? Leanne Puleo? Stuart Smith? Christine St. Hilaire? Kristen Typer? And Wally Typer? Bradford Tripp? Gregory Young? And Susan Young?
I would note, the Typerds and the Youngs attended the academy as couples, so you can also use this as like a date night. And a shameless plug, that we had lined up childcare through the Recreation Department had there been enough parents participating in the program with kids so that we could make it available to some of the younger families, too.
Nice.
Keep your eyes peeled for the next round of applications, which will be coming on July.
Thank you.
It was nice. Great program.
Yes.
Thank you, Jen. So cadets, you're now gonna, I think, get a real lesson in democracy in small towns and how things should operate. So there's a large crowd here tonight. I can assume why you're here, although nobody contacted me and said you were coming for a particular reason. So let me explain new business. Citizens in the town can come before us with a subject that's important to them and ask us to consider it. We don't debate it, discuss it tonight, we take it under advisement. Either the board will act to it or we'll direct the town manager. So, given the guidelines, we can have a leader. Do you have somebody here that is a spokesperson for this group? Please go to the microphone, introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Brittany Raceley. I live at 109 Hobart Street in Danvers.
Welcome.
Obviously, Danvers. As you know, I have two pet goats, Dean and DeLuca. And the keeping of my pet goats has been the topic of recent litigation. Over the past year, my council and I have been in communication with the Danvers Planning Department regarding a zoning amendment to address the keeping of animals in all of the residential zoning districts. Rather than proposing our own zoning amendment, we were advised after meetings with town staff that the town planning department would propose a zoning amendment to allow the keeping of farm animals in the residential zoning districts, subject to very strict Board of Health regulations. Through communications and conversations with planning staff, including Planning Director Aaron Henry over the last year, we were periodically advised and updated of the status and forward movement of the zoning amendment preparation. And we were further advised that it was on track for the February 2020 special town meeting warrant. However, just last week, my attorney was advised by Aaron Henry that the town manager had asked the planning department zoning amendment relative to the keeping of animals to be held and not presented to the selectmen for forwarding on to the planning board. for forwarding on to the planning board for public hearing. This was a shock to myself and my family. We feel we have been working with the planning staff, and we had been continually told that town meeting would have an opportunity at the February town meeting to vote on a warrant article presented by the town planning division to address the keeping of farm animals. This delay is not in keeping with the representations made to us. And I ask that the town administration not allow a delay in consideration of the farm animal warrant article. Much time has been spent on preparation of this warrant article by town staff. And the article as prepared will handle the keeping of farm animals in the same manner as other neighboring towns, including Peabody, Beverly, Salem, and Middleton. We ask that the process move forward and the warrant article be moved on for public hearing by the planning board for ultimate consideration by the town meeting members at the February special town meeting. I have a petition signed by over 900 voters in the town of Danvers, all in favor of moving the warrant article regarding the keeping of animals on to the planning board for public hearing in time for placement on the February town meeting warrant. I would like to present this petition to the selectmen. And thank you so much for your consideration.
So I think when I first got involved in town government, the issue then was lights on the ball field. And I only collected 80 signatures. So congratulations. Mr. Town Manager, I wasn't aware that there was work being done on a warrant article for the special town meeting relative to this subject. Is the language been prepared?
The zoning language itself, well, I guess to back up, my understanding is that in February of 2014, the town meeting considered this or a very similar question, and at that time elected to allow this particular use in some of the residential zones and not others. So in terms of preparing zoning language, that's a fairly straightforward process. I think the piece that would fall outside of the town meeting's purview would be the Board of Health regulations that were referenced. I know that staff, to the point that was made, has been working on a model Board of Health regulation, looking at what the Mass Farm Bureau has put out in terms of best practice. But to my knowledge, that process has not been vetted through a public hearing process through the Board of Health. So I believe that the intent would be to marry the two. In terms of the planning board hearings, I believe that for the February town meeting, we're too far into that process. But the May town meeting would be a viable option to prepare both the zoning language and the Board of Health regulations that ultimately town meeting would have to determine by vote.
Thank you. So apparently, it's not the public hearing with the Board of Health, and that's an important key piece. So I'll work with the town manager to expedite as much as we can. My sense is it won't happen for the February special town meeting because that warrant closes December 13th. Now, we can sometimes extend that, but I have to wait to hear what the Board of Health has done and had their public hearing. And we'll try to keep you updated. You're obviously in touch with the planning department. They can keep you updated as well. And we'll put this on, I can't say a fast track, certainly no later than May. But until I hear from the Board of Health, I really can't promise you anything. But thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for being civil and presenting your petition. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members want to comment now or at the end?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on this only because I have a little bit more knowledge than maybe some people do about the background of problems like this. Part of this problem was created by our planning staff many years ago when they changed the zoning regulations from a written document to one with charts and graphs. And one particular individual, who's long since left the town of Danvers, had several omissions in that transition, such that prior to that time, you could have farm animals definitely in residence three. Residence two was able to maintain it because most of the farms that are in Danvers are in residence two. And residence one had always been restricted but not prohibited because of the smaller lots. I feel extremely upset about this situation because the predecessor to Brittany and Tim's residence, the person that owned the house before, was driven out of town for the same reason. She wanted six chickens, and she wasn't allowed to have it, and she moved away. It's kind of interesting that we were an agricultural community in the past. We voted a law to allow freedom of agriculture in our community. This has never been brought before our agricultural commission. It's an object, it's a topic that was caused by one person's insensitivity about 20 years ago. We'll just call him Mr. Z. He had a whole backyard of rabbits. He refused to move them away from his neighbor's border. He refused to clean the animals properly. And because of that, the people got really upset about it and had these laws changed. Regrettably, about 20 days after the law changed, Mr. Z passed away. And what he left on town was the inability of people to be able to have pets or agricultural animals, such as bees or chickens. Now, it's kind of ridiculous that you can have chickens and bees in Manhattan. You can have them in Boston, but you can't have them in Danvers, the home of the Danvers carrot, the Danvers onion, and many other things. It's absolutely absurd, and it was caused in part by a very careless transition of zoning regulations in this town. And I think it behooves us to act proactively in this to help the Raceleys be able to at least have an opportunity to keep their animals and have the people in town speak. I've never seen 900 signatures on almost anything in 50 years. And I know I have. One of the comments that I make very often is people complain about something or want to propose something, and I tell them, well, what are you going to replace? Because everything that we have in Danvers that's happening has happened because of people who have come to support an idea, a law, a zoning regulation, a park, et cetera. And this is a great example of the community that has been working very proactively, trying to do it in a very organized fashion. And to have it turned at the last moment or near the last moment and have their wishes postponed dramatically, I don't think is fair. And I think that we should take the proactive move as selectmen to direct the town manager to have this happen for our special town meeting.
Thank you. I understand the emotions behind this. I spent part of my childhood, my parents moved away from Danvers when I was in grade school, and I've since returned, obviously, on a farm. I've had farm animals as pets. Understand the affection for them. And Brittany and I had a nice discussion this morning and talked about tonight. And one of the things I hope people take away from this is this is not an adversarial position between the selectmen and Brittany. And this is refining our laws, is what it is. The zoning board, the bylaws are that. Legal language defensible in court that is approved and ratified by the Attorney General. And so changing those are not quick and easy things to do. You need to consider the unintended consequences. You need to hear in public hearing from all sides. You obviously have one side who is appreciative of the situation. And I'm not going to add a value judgment to that. Everybody, you know, someone said, there's a law on the books, and I want the law applied. And I, you know, as part of the lawmaking portion of the town, I understand that even for laws I do not agree with. But we live in a society that says if you don't agree with the law, you still are compelled by it until that gets changed. What's happening now is the intent to change the law. And I appreciate and support that. It should have its day in public. It should have the town meeting look at this and decide it. And town meeting gets that after a thorough review of the language changes, public hearings, and in this case, the Board of Health. Because it's the Board of Health that will be administering whatever zoning comes to. Usually, zoning bylaws are things about setbacks and buildings and wiring and things like that. And we have a building inspector who enforces those codes. In this case, a lot of it has to do with health. You know, I happen to know goats are very clean animals. But like you said, with rabbits, it depends, it's the owner often, not the animal itself. And you have to be wary of what the unintended consequences of animal husbandry and owning animals are. So I want this to go forward. I want this to go to town meeting. I'm not sure that we have adequate time to do the research to get it in February. But what we're always saying is, three months later gives us the time. I'm agreeing with you that it should be no later than May. And I, too, would look to the town manager to find out, do we have enough time to be thoughtful and thorough and provide a public hearing that would allow for all sides who might want to weigh in on this to, and I don't need the answer now. That's a question the chairman's asking you. In order to do it in the appropriate way that will be supported by the Attorney General in ratifying the language. So I'm supportive of the intent and the desire and the outcome. I'm not sure that getting it in February is going to happen based on the methodical steps of getting it there. I don't know what the planning board told you, and I can't speak to that. So I'm supportive of this coming no later than May, as the chairman has said.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Dan. I applaud and I endorse the statements of Bill and of Gardner. And I also love little goats. Up at the Topsfield Fair, that was one of the things I always wanted to make sure I went over where the little goats were. So I like goats. And so I hope you have them as soon as you can and that we'll move forward with this. And a wonderful presentation and a presence in the room tonight makes me feel good.
Thank you. So the town manager and I, the building inspector, ZBA, Board of Health, will sit down soon to work on the language and what it is we feel is appropriate and create the language for a town meeting in 2020. I'll promise you that. Okay? So thank you, everybody, for coming, for Dan.
I have one more thing I want to add to it. Brittany, if you have problems legally with the animals being on your property, I have a building and a facility that can take them on my farm, and they cannot deny us from having the pigmy goats on Clock Farm. So it's open to you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, thank you all for coming. Anybody's welcome to say for the next. Ethan?
Joey. Joey.
Nice to see you. You come just for the goats?
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
That's a hot topic. If it bleeds, it leads.
Oh, come on.
Don't quote me.
I had an inkling that they were coming. Again, nobody reached out and said they were. Alan? Oh, no problem. You know, keeping of animals, it's not just for Brittany, it's for the community at a whole.
That's right.
Which, we'll get it done. Subject to town meeting. Thanks. Dean and DeLuca, okay.
Pat, why am I not surprised you knew the Four Rivers? Why am I not surprised you knew the Four Rivers?
More new business? Go ahead. Do you need the town manager?
He's here.
Oh, he's here, he's back, all right. I couldn't see out on my left side.
Bill Brad? Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, precinct one. I had three things I wanted to ask about. One was, I attend different meetings. There's the ZBA, planning board, CONCOM. I come to the selectmen's meeting. Sometimes when I sit on one board, I hear one thing said. I'll sit at another board, the same subject comes up. However, there seems to be missing information. The other board isn't aware of what the other board might have discussed concerning this matter. And to me, it's kind of confusing that if one board says one thing, now you have another board discussing the same matter, and they have no idea, or at least they appear to have no idea, what the other board has discussed about this matter. So they make a decision which might be with or counter to the other boards. I think there's a lack of communication between the boards. I don't know what you can do about it or if something's being done that I'm not aware of. I just, when I sit, I'm confused that one doesn't know what the other's doing.
So the short answer is each board works within their guidelines or their charge, and they may see something different than another board. But the town manager, I meet biweekly for updates on what's going on with other boards. And if we see a conflict, we'll try to resolve it. But unless I have a specific instance, I can't respond, yes?
May I suggest, too, Aaron Henry just stepped out in the hall. But if there's a particular matter, I would strongly encourage Bill and Aaron to sit down. And Aaron's department is involved with most of the boards that I presume would be in this category in terms of ZB, you know, planning, conservation, and the like, so.
I'm more than willing, I know he doesn't look forward to me, but I'm more than willing to speak to him about my concern. An easy one. We have a snow budget.
Budget's too early.
Stop, stop. We have a snow budget, certain amount. We've already spent some of it. Could we be kept up to date on what the budget is? How much has been spent? And I'm sure.
Bill, you realize the first storm event ended about four hours ago, right?
It's still pouring.
I'm not asking tonight, but at least so we could be kept abreast of. Because usually in the past, when we run out of money, which we do on many years, the difference has to be made up by other departments who necessarily didn't arrange their budget in such a fashion as to, well, this is my budget, but here's the part that goes to the snow budget. I don't think it's fair to different, I don't think it's fair for different departments to help support the snow budget. I've been told in the past that if we, if you, if we as a town commit $2 million for the snow budget, and you don't spend all of it, you can't put it in a bank for maybe the next year when it might be needed. Now, if I'm wrong, fine, tell me. But I was told that the legislature doesn't allow us to. I have a savings account, that the town would have a savings account for the snow budget. You're shaking your head no, so.
We could either do an addendum to the Citizens Academy or we could wait for the budget process to start. Public Works does keep a, they track by storm progress, you know, expenses to date against what's been budgeted. We do budget roughly $850,000 a year, which would cover 18 to 20 storm events. But we do know, and I do report to this board throughout the winter, where we are against that budget from time to time. But to the point you were making, you cannot carry over funds specific to storms. But the legislature doesn't, you can overspend. It's one of the budget areas where you can spend beyond your bottom line, and you're allowed to levy that against the next year tax levy. Typically, what we would do is if we have vacancies in departments, we would, at the May town meeting, cover some of the overages through other departments. We wouldn't ask them to cut back on. We wouldn't ask them to cut back on services to cover that. But if they happen to have surpluses, that's where we'd look first. And then secondarily, we would go to free cash. We don't very often have to run it into the red into the following fiscal year.
I just want to bring it up so the town or the town meeting members are aware of the restraints that we have. And we can all hope for what we just went through will be the last until, say, a couple of inches Christmas Eve and then gone. Not going to happen. The other thing was, item five on tonight's agenda, will I be allowed to make a statement?
I would never deny you that opportunity, Bill.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Can I comment on Mr. Bradstreet?
Yes, you may.
The interrelationship between the various boards and agencies, I recognize, I think maybe Gardner was the one, or maybe Dan said, each of the boards has its own mandate. In other words, it's like, you know, if you're doing your job, you do your job and you don't do what somebody else said next door. But it's always, you go to a lot of meetings, Mr. Bradstreet, and I joke with you sometime about being here. But I think you perform a real public function in being kind of a watchdog on matters like this where you can, in a meeting, bring to the attention of some other board zoning or planning, something that you believe feels a little inconsistent with something that you heard. But in any event, I don't take you for granted. And I thank you for your interest in the various boards. And I recognize that each board has its own job and its own statutory responsibility. And part of the thing is, if you're going to be listening to evidence and making a decision, what some other board did really is not part of that process. Politically, it is. And that's the function that someone like you can play. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Move on now to number four, the board. I did ask before, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry, Chris. Go ahead, okay, go ahead. Somebody get that for us? It does come off.
Comes off. Bill?
Hi. Good evening. Chris Slaven, 24 Cherry Street. I just wanted to, I know it's only been four hours since the storm has stopped. However, I brought this up previously, and I'd like to bring it up again, not specifically in regards to the storm that just ended four hours ago. So I had spoken previously about the fact that when Danvers had the opportunity and the rest of the towns in the state had the opportunity to put in place a, basically a snow removal cleanup process, a fining system for those that don't shovel their sidewalks, Danvers chose, like many towns, chose not to implement that. And so, you know, I had come before the board previously and spoken about the possibility of having that enacted or having people just find a way to have people shovel their sidewalks. Otherwise, the town's responsible for doing it, and it's not getting done in the legally required amount of time. And I'm not talking about this storm, but last year, it was the same issue. The DPW got better about keeping the curb cuts clear downtown. But I just went, and again, four hours, but this is, I guarantee you that five days from now, if the snow is still here, I will still be riding my wheelchair in the street to get to town hall. I couldn't cross at the crosswalk because there was no place for me to go. So I'm going to ask again that either Danvers put in place the system allowed for by the state, or they figure out a way to make sure that the sidewalks are passable. And that means 36 inches wide with cleared curb cuts and crosswalks that can be used. And again, I'm not talking about this storm. I'm just saying, moving forward, we're talking the 3rd of December here. We've got a long winter ahead of us. And I'd just like to be able to access things. And I'm sure that other people who walk and, you know, have that as well, so.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, would you have DPW kind of update us on clearing of sidewalks?
Are we going to get updated every single year, do you think?
No, I'm going to ask them to update us in the near future so that we have a policy or a direction.
Okay.
Do we do it every year?
Because this is year three, so I'm just curious.
The board changes every year, so.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, this is year three, so.
Okay. And the other thing to add to that list is contractors pushing snow into the street, specifically the new condos on Cherry Street. Granted, it's their first winter, but there was a big pile of snow left in the street this morning. I only ran into one, so.
I know the one in the yard.
Right. Okay, thanks. It's a tough area. But just an update, and we can discuss it. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, thank you. Number four, the board will vote to accept a gift from Danvers DCAT to the Danvers Senior Center in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg Dolan is here from DCAT to speak to this item. Too often, I steal people's thunder, so I'm going to remain silent and let him do the talking.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I'm Greg Dolan, the Executive Director of DCAT. So this check, if you're wondering what it's from, we did a fundraiser back in October. It's our annual Oktoberfest event. So each year, we partner with a different organization. Last year, it was Habitat for Humanity North Shore. This year, it was the Denver Senior Center Transportation Fund specifically. So I just want to thank everyone who came out for it, the sponsors for it, who were Cappy's and Carl Sausage Kitchen, who donated the food and beverages. It was a good, positive night. You could see the enthusiasm from the Senior Center. A lot of their staff came out for it. So you can see they have a great culture over there. A lot of people who were invested really wanted to do something to help that fund. So we hope that you accept, and thank you to everyone who attended.
Thank you. Comments, David?
Thank you, Dan. Greg, thank you. I've served on the board now of the Senior Center because I'm appointed by the town manager. So I attend the meetings down there, and I'm not, I'm not old enough to be so active. I'm only 77. But the Transportation Fund is very, very important to some people down there. So this is a nice thing you did, and I thank you for it very much.
Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to thank you, Greg, for doing this and being part of our community. We appreciate it very much.
Gardner?
I offer my thanks as well for your participation, and thank you for your generosity.
And I'm also a member of the Friends of the Council on Aging. I got to get that right. And we appreciate the efforts that you've made towards the Transportation Fund. It's a very important service. There's a lot of folks out there that can't afford a cab. They need these rides to get to their doctors or shopping. And so it's a great service that we're able to provide to the community. And thank you for your support.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the gift from Danvers DCAT to the Senior Center in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Paragraph 53A.
Second motion?
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. The board has requested to renew liquor licenses for calendar year 2020 as per the attached, is that you, Mr. Town Manager, or the town clerk?
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask a vote from the board relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for calendar year 2020. You have been previously submitted a listing. And the only exception to the list would be Applebee's Restaurant that closed down at the Liberty Tree Mall area. They have notified the town that they have chosen not to renew.
So they'll turn it back to the town?
That is correct. As of 12:31, that license would be no longer, 12:31 at midnight, that license is no longer in effect.
Even though it's not in use at the moment?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to what the town clerk said. Some guidance from the ABCC and more as a reminder that each year, the ABCC recognizes that there will be certain licenses that, for example, there may be a restaurant under renovation, or there may be a license that has been subject to action and that sort of thing. And the ABCC wants local boards to separate the renewal process from any follow-up or deliberation or required subsequent hearings and meetings that may be required for particular license holders.
So bottom line is, it'd like us to approve the list as presented.
Correct. They would like to see the list approved. And if there's a particular license that needs to be subject to a follow-up conversation, that that would happen after the renewals were processed.
Thank you. Gardner?
No questions, no discussion.
Bill?
I think this is the cleanest year we've had since I've been on the board. I have no questions about any of these. Good job, Joe.
David?
My only concern with this is that the police chief be invited to comment with respect to these licenses being renewed. Although what the town manager has just said maybe makes that superfluous, I don't know. But I think it's always important to have the input from the police department as to observations and behaviors of license holders when it comes to alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the and renew the applicants as presented. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Mr. Bradstreet? The vote's taken.
Thank you. Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I brought this up before as far as liquor licenses and the renewal process they go through. It concerns me that a liquor license is a privilege, it's not a right. The town issues a license to businesses to provide, sell liquor. It bothers me that at the end of the year, some of the license holders, for whatever reason, fail to appear, come in when the town hall is open, sign for, pay for, or whatever this should be doing prior to the end of the year. If the notice that goes out to them that they have to renew their license through the process, if they fail to appear, pay their due, sign whatever is needed, at the end of the year, if they haven't got their license from the town like they should, it shows to me some disrespect for the town. I don't know if the license holder or designee can come in and sign or do what he needs to do. That the, from my experience, some don't. The job is then passed over to the police department for these people who are, for whatever reason, not doing what they should be doing when they should be doing it. That's my concern. If I don't pay my taxes on time, there's a penalty for me. If they don't renew their license on time, is there a penalty? Can they operate without displaying a current license without a penalty? Perhaps there can be answers. It just bothers me that some businesses appear to be too busy to do what they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. I refer to the town clerk for his comments.
Mr. Chairman, I can indicate that all of the licenses in the listing that is before you, that you just voted on, all of these applicants, there were certain benchmarks that these applicants had to do and provide to us prior to the close of business on Friday, the last business day in the month of November. If one did not fulfill their obligation in that timely manner, they would have to reapply for their license. And I can indicate to you, a few years back, without naming the business in town, they had to go through that exact process. So there is a penalty if they don't supply all the requested information by the close of business on the last day of November.
I think if your answer, it was something that I had dealt with in the past, and it's nice to hear that it's been solved. So thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Number six, the board will vote to refer a proposed downtown corridor zoning bylaw and zoning map amendment to the planning board for a public hearing and a recommendation to town meeting. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Chair of the Planning Board, Bill Prentice, and Director of Landy's Community Services, Aaron Henry, in the audience. You received a packet of information as well as a letter from Mr. Prentice with your materials. The planning board unanimously voted to advance this to you tonight with the hope that it would be returned to them for a public hearing next week. And I would invite either Bill or Aaron or both to answer questions or to offer a presentation in terms of what you received with your packets.
Thank you. Mr. Henry? So before you start, if I may, just so I have a clear understanding what you would like from us tonight, you're not giving us an actual warrant article, is that correct?
Just asking that the proposal be sent back to the planning board so they can conduct the public hearing.
So this is more check the box to keep it all legal?
Yeah, and that's why I included the Form 7. I'm not sure if you've seen that in the past.
Oh, I saw it, thank you.
Those are one of those things that we have to do for the Attorney General's office.
All right. But I just want the board to understand, we don't have the actual warrant article in front of us. So please continue and proceed.
Well, in real short, I wanted to provide both the planning board and the selectmen an update on where we are in the process. So we included the timeline, just so you see. We were asked, we were told we probably didn't have to do 24 meetings for this proposal. So we've been keeping our running list of what we're up to as we go through the process. And then we're at that point now where we kind of have to start hitting the statutory aspects of a zoning change. The planning board sending that to the selectmen, the selectmen sending that back. And holding the public hearing is where we're at right now. And now we're kind of in the fast lane to town meeting.
So if you have some highlights, that's great. But then I may just ask the board if they have any questions.
Yeah, no, really, I'm here to ask questions. I mean, the big one that kind of hit us late in the game was the nuance with the 40R program. It's staff's recommendation that we not pursue the 40R, which the planning board will have to make a final determination on how we want to approach that as we come out of the public hearing next week. I think the board was leaning towards, and I don't want to overstate it, I think the board was comfortable with the base zoning change, provided there's a few loose ends that they were asking staff to tie up, mainly about, are there any uses that we wouldn't be removing from either C1, C1A, or Industrial 1, that those property owners might have an expectation that that be there going forward? Or vice versa, what were we adding to the mix that might compensate for that? And so we've prepared a draft for that. We will have that ready for next week as well, in addition to all the other materials that we're working on. And in short on that, adding residential to the mix really kind of washes away, as we saw from the slideshow earlier. Once you add residential value to property, really all of the other uses that we're talking about tweaking, kind of our minor peanuts compared to the value that we're adding to the districts. That said, we did go through and did a side-by-side comparison, and we'll have that material ready for next week's meeting. And hopefully, the planning board will be comfortable with staff's recommendation that we proceed with a base zoning change.
Thank you. Gardner, any questions?
Oh, yeah. So I read this with concern. And obviously, my concern is that I represent the, one of the boards and commissions that the board has assigned me to is the Affordable Housing Trust. I understand that we may not get the incentive we're looking for. I can't speak for the trust, but as a member of the trust, I would say that that's immaterial. The trust is looking to provide affordable housing opportunities in town. Downtown provides an excellent opportunity for that with the ability to have people in a living vibrant downtown, walkable to public transportation, walkable to potential jobs, walkable to several of the schools, the elementary school, the middle school, maybe not the high school, depending on where you are. But abandoning 40R because we're not going to get as much money as we thought does not seem to be a-
We're not striking the affordability provision.
And can I, I just want to clarify, Gardner, the zoning, both in the last process and this process, was developed blind to the 40R requirements. It was then compared to 40R to determine whether or not it made sense.
Okay.
The lack of an incentive on this has virtually nothing to do with this determination. The point that does have to do with the incentive is that the, if the zoning that we're doing is largely mirroring what's required in 40R, it is not worth the administrative headache that goes along with participating in 40R if there's no incentive to do so.
Okay. So if you're telling me that the language independent of 40R will still mandate a certain amount of affordable-
It may not mirror it perfectly, but-
It doesn't have to be perfectly, but-
It's largely consistent.
I think it was 25% when we did- It doesn't have to be perfectly, but, you know, I think it was 25% when we did the last one.
Twenty.
Twenty percent.
Twenty.
So, if you were to tell me 10 or 15, or, you know, 10 would be the bare minimum the trust would be interested in, because that just keeps us treading a lot.
The draft is, currently is at 20%.
Okay.
That's, again, we don't have to hold that line anymore, but we would never, I can't imagine the planning board ever supporting less than...
Okay.
Again, I don't want to put you off the spot. I'm just saying, we're not planning on...
Okay, as long as, as long as, so I'll be looking with keen eyes on that one.
Yeah, really the question...
And the language would have to be such that these could be registered with DHCD.
Oh, yeah. No, that's all staying the same. I think the only issue would be for us at the staff level is 40R has to be an overlay by legislative mandate. We think at the staff level that it's simpler to draft this as a base zoning change. So, that kind of simplifies the process for us at that level. I don't expect...
Then I misinterpreted the letter.
I apologize. And I was not clear in the memo, but we're not anticipating any substantive changes to the proposal based on it not being a 40R smart growth overlay. The language is hardly going to change, if at all.
Okay. Very, very good. If, and my, my general question is, my presumption is, for the most part, this mirrors what we previously had done, because I was, I really delved into it then. I haven't delved into the i's and t's of this.
All the design standards, everything's the same. To be honest, the, where it differs is obviously the scope, the scale, the area we're going, is a little larger than the last. To be honest, this is a little less dense than the last one. And again, that's to Mr. Barth's point about us going through the process and just kind of organically arriving at what we thought was appropriate for these districts, as opposed to the Maple Street area. So, these densities are a little bit lower. To be honest, one thing that we would probably, at the staff level, recommend to the planning board next week is, there's one requirement that has a little higher density than we would probably do. So, we might turn that down a little bit in one certain building typology. Again, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but there's one building typology, that 40R, to be there, you kind of had to be a little higher than we would probably set it otherwise. So, we're probably going to turn that one down, but that's about it.
So, I wonder, through you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Often, when we see the warrant articles or the budget or documents that go through revisions, that are based on, like, I'll say zoning board bylaws, it's exceedingly helpful to see old law, strike, 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 new.
Preparing that.
If we could see an agenda, or, I don't necessarily mean strikeout, because it's not striking out the other, but some manner in which you can say, this is how it differs from the other, while having me to read through
Yeah.
the volumes that I've already read through and accepted and understood.
We are working on that. We will have, for those who just want the quick version, we got the FAQs. There's a slightly longer version that tries to explain the moving parts without necessarily diving into it. Then there'll be a longer summary of what's moving in what sections of the bylaw. And then, we, I spent a lot of time today, on this snow day, dealing with the strikeout, the actual redline version of the bylaw itself. So, depending on the level of interest, you will have a product to pursue before town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. David?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I have concerns about two items. One of them is traffic, which I know we can't do much about, and I'm not going to pursue that, because I think it'll take care of itself. The other one is parking, and I'm very concerned about parking in this proposed plan. We saw it dismissed with the addition, it's being put on down on the square right now with the current tenant. When they say, oh, we got one parking space per unit, this is the one, was it 55 Maple that's being done now? But there's no parking provision for any of the businesses there. So, they've taken away any parking that the businesses might have, outback, and are going to provide theoretically, I don't know how they're going to do it, one space per unit. This is being modeled after, I'm told, the Daniella's plan down in the Tapewell. Well, guess what? The parking does not work at that density. If Daniella's did not have access to large portions of the Lee's property, two doors down the street, for accessory parking, it wouldn't happen. McKennan's has already placed signs prohibiting parking in their lot. There's no space on street for the parking. And if this doesn't, this parking doesn't work, I don't see how we're going to be able to do it, because it's going to have a huge impact on the downtown area, especially along Maple Street. We do have town lots. In fact, several years ago, I think Mr. Trask and I were pushing for that Hobart Street lot, with the idea that it might help accessory uses in the future, which I can buy. But I think that it is behooving, or it should be mandated and not encouraged, and I see what you've got encouraged here, stack parking, tandem parking, shared parking. Some of it is unadulterated bullshit. You know that, Aaron. You're not going to get someone to park on someone else's land, because that other person doesn't want to give up their rights to their property.
I think...
And that study, we did a parking study, and a lot of it is assuming that we're going to let Peter park on Paul's property when Paul isn't using it necessarily. And it may not work, because there's going to be cars there. Parking is a major problem for downtown, even now. So, if they can't provide at least one parking space per unit on their property, I'm not going to best support this.
Nope, and that's a fair criticism.
I'd like to jump in. I, I'm going to, I'm going to walk out of the limo here and disagree mildly with the assertion. This is a model that works very well in a lot of places. And part of what, we spent a lot of time in the run-up to the December 2017 town meeting, you know, working through the parking study. We have something like 1,700 parking places within a 10-minute walk of the downtown. And it's evident that as the development starts, the town and its many spaces will probably have to play a role in solving some of these problems. But I think that, you know, the, the effort is that if, if the, if the parking standards from 50 years ago are applied today, we're going to end up with a, with a downtown that's 50% parking lot and 50% structure, which is not, which is not ideal either.
And I think...
Not to, not to deny the fact that these are issues that have to be resolved, but I think this is, this is modeled on what's working well, and it's, I think it's incumbent on us to figure out how to make it work here.
And I think it's a, it's a fine point, but I think it's an important one. Where these proposals differ is, we've added much more, strengthened the language around what's called parking and transportation demand management techniques. So, again, I think we'll be much more vigilant on how they're proposing to park themselves. We are also adding mitigation, a traffic mitigation element to it. We want that process to be community-driven as opposed to developer-driven. Typically, today, a big development comes forward, and, oh, you might have to do a traffic study. And then, inevitably, that traffic study is kind of, it's about your site and how to improve traffic flow to and from your site. You're mitigating it. It might happen at the next signal or whatever, but it's really about your development. We're going to try to turn that on its head in this language, and really, it's, you might have to mitigate, but we, we, through the planning board and the town, will decide how that, you know, what improvements need to be made in the streetscape. So, again, we might prioritize pedestrian crosswalks, street lighting, street furniture. We might not try to make it better for people to get in and out of your site. Now, again, that's an example, and maybe there's a time when we'd want to put it into a signal. But just saying, we want to, we're trying to approach the parking and transportation problems with going forward a little bit differently than we did even in the Maple Street area, knowing that we have the data from the parking study and the traffic study that we did at that time. So, again, I think we've approached it, while it sounds similar on its face. I think we've got some stronger language included in this proposal than we did even in the 2017. So, hopefully, we can count you among our supporters when it comes time for the big vote.
Well, there's been three developments approved in the past few years, on Cherry Street in particular. And this morning, or this, this afternoon, might be a good example. Where did that snow go that they had to remove from their parking lot? The snow did not go where it was supposed to go, because there's no place to put it. Number two, there's no place for a private contractor to get rid of snow in this town anywhere legally. There's no snow dump. The town uses an illegal one down behind the Holden Richmond for its own use, but they do not allow private enterprise to use that. We have seen insufficient planning for parking at those three locations on and off of Cherry Street. We saw the Daniella's, which was supposed to be the be-all and end-all for new planning, and it's not working. If every parcel in that section down there were developed to capacity, where are you going to park? Certainly, the Sears Tower that they built several years ago had to take land from the town, which our former town manager kind of gave them, in an old substation, to get enough accessory parking for that building. The apartment building on Purchase Street is a good example also, where we had, back in those days, only one space required for, per residential unit. And those people are parking all the way from High Street, well, not High Street, I'm sorry, from Ash Street, all the way down almost to where Laurel Street comes out, to park the accessory extra cars. Some of them, I understand, park quite a ways away in private yards when it's the snow removal ban. We have a snow ban right now. Where do these cars park? They only can put so many on Hobart Street parking lot, and that's the only extra parking that I know of that you've got there. You've got to be, you've got to demand parking underneath these buildings. You've got to demand a park, a unit, one space per residential unit. If you don't, you're going to have a problem. It's going to affect all the businesses downtown and all the land people who are living down there. Certainly, Dan won't even be able to back out of his driveway, probably, on Page Street. He's already got two spaces taken that he can, you know, arc away and back out and get out there. We can't afford these spaces down there.
Well, I would say the base language right now in the proposal is one and a half spaces per unit, and that goes up if you add more bedrooms, although we're not anticipating a high bedroom count in these units. So, I think we've already north of, of your number. I would also just point out, procedurally, a big part of what we're trying to do downtown is set a set of predictable rules that apply to everybody. I think all of the projects that we just mentioned were kind of ad hoc projects, where they needed some sort of relief in order to happen. And so, to your point, if they were all developed in that fashion, it might not work. To be honest, this is a way that we're trying to look in the aggregate and say, okay, if we apply this consistent set of standards to the entire neighborhood, does this work? And that way, rather than having these one-offs and everyone kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, we're really trying to set a framework that can, you know, work for us through the next couple of business cycles. So, again, I'm hoping that we've actually have answers to your concerns. And hopefully, we'll be able to prove that to you over the coming weeks and months, and, and have your support at town meeting.
My faith in the planning board has eroded dramatically with those three locations on Cherry Street. It's simple as that. I mean, they approved things that were probably more dense than they should have been, but they allowed it to happen. Maybe this goes back to a few years ago.
We were dealing with site plan approval. I mean, to be fair, the planning board was given those from another board.
Which board, which board gave them to them?
Those all came through the zoning board of appeals. And that's the point of what we're trying to do downtown, is really look at the macro, what can the neighborhood hold, what are the standards that apply fairly across that district? And that's what we're trying to put forward now.
They're not making any more new land. You know that, Aaron.
I've heard that before.
I have too, and it's very true. So, you're going to have to go either vertical, down or up to accommodate the parking.
We're allowing that. And again, I would argue, on High Street, we have got a lot of room to play. I don't think parking is going to be a problem in the industrial, what is now industrial one on High Street. Downtown is going to be a harder, you know, it's going to be harder for property owners to exercise these rights. And if they can't park it, and they can't handle it, then they won't get the development. And that's okay. I mean, that's...
And I made no comment about High Street, okay?
No, I hear you. Oh, I hear you.
I feel that there's probably adequate space for most of those parcels, but on Maple Street,
Right.
between Elm Street and Hobart Street, there is not.
And we can't solve, the zoning's not trying to solve all problems for all people. We're trying to set, like I said, a set of rules that works in aggregate for the district. And if individual properties can't make the math work...
So, we mandate them and don't encourage them?
I'm not saying we're not encouraging them, but we're setting a standard here that we...
Your document says you're encouraged under new proposed zoning. I'm saying, no, we mandate it. And if they can't, and just as you're saying, no, if they can't make the, the cut, then it's not going to happen.
I think the point Aaron is making, we're talking about projects that were approved subject to multiple stops for relief. And the, you know, the intent and the purpose of zoning is to put a framework in place, to use Aaron's words, that's predictable, so that the planning board and the zoning board and other boards aren't being asked to deviate from the plan, that the, that the town meeting and the selectmen have thought through what they want to see, and then folks are expected to comply with that.
But reality is reality. I have been subject to reality behind my house of every single lot that borders my property being altered by the conservation commission and being put to the extreme extent that the law allows, so that setbacks are only 35 feet rather than 100 or 200 feet. You get a good lawyer, you're going to get all kinds of things happening. And these events down on Chata Street were not as a result of zoning inadequacies, it was a result of very good lawyers representing the developers.
For another time.
What's that, Bill?
I guess so.
Thank you. So, Bill, I want to thank you for reminding me where I live. So, I do need to disclose that I do live in work, in the live and work sub-district. And I have some issues that concern me as this area gets built out, and I call it TNT. Trash, noise, and traffic. Trash, we have a bylaw, not often upheld, of not picking up trash before 7:00 a.m. Even last weekend, the last week, JRM was down there before 7:00 o'clock. So, I would look to the ZBA and the planning board to be more proactive in telling these developers that we have bylaws, that they're expected to follow them. I don't think that's done all the time. Noise, we don't have a bylaw. We depend upon the police to make the determination if the noise is excessive or not. So, that's something that I think should be addressed in these areas. It's separate bylaw, not, is it part of zoning? I don't know, but it should be looked at. Traffic, I did hear from your meeting last week that traffic planning is to benefit Danvers, not the developer or the development. And as Bill says, we have, these things sound good, but we do have these fancy, high-priced attorneys, no offense, David, who come in...
I was never that expensive, Dan.
But they do. They come in and they get everything they can for their client. I understand that. But we need to hold the line if we're going to have traffic to benefit Danvers. And let's be sure that we do that.
Doing the best we can right now.
Well, so I hope that the zoning addresses that and gives both the ZBA and the planning the ability to say no. Simple. Your base zoning changes you're thinking of doing, let's be careful we don't drop something off the chow or add something that we'll regret later.
Yeah.
That seems to be the modus operandi in the last few years, when we do these zoning changes.
Correct.
Before your time, obviously, but let's check the right boxes.
We did a side-by-side. We'll have that prepared for the planning board next week, because, again, that was a concern of just what use is exactly we're changing. And so, we've got a draft of that.
Right. That'd be interesting to see that in some detail.
Yep.
Please.
Yep.
My other notes, I guess, have been addressed. Let me just, what's the likelihood of a parking garage going in downtown Danvers?
Unlikely.
Right.
It's, fiscally, parking garages are probably the most expensive thing you can build.
You need a transit nearby.
Right. Yeah, they're about $20,000 a space for structured parking.
$20,000 a space? Then maybe I should start renting mine out.
Well, that's to build. Surface parking, a little cheaper. But again, yeah, parking, so downtown, I don't think our economics are there. Again, I'm not saying you won't see what's, the new FAD is called podium building, which is where they basically go up one floor with steel, and then you have surface parking, but it's under the building. Daniella's kind of has a little bit of that with a cantor lever out the back, if you've, if you've gone around the back.
There's a lot of condos in Peabody.
Yeah.
Their parking is all underneath.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we will allow, again, in, in theory, if the site's amenable, we are not going to prohibit parking under or a structure. But again, I think the economics haven't caught up to that yet, and probably not in the foreseeable, you know, this cycle or the next cycle. But it's there, if it's, if it is economic... it's there. If it's, if it is economical for somebody to do it, we're not going to prohibit it necessarily.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
My understanding is that we are not reviewing tonight, as a board of selectmen, any particular aspects of this to approve or disapprove, but really merely to be one of the things that has to happen in the process of it going forward to public hearing. So I think that we should do that. But I also want to say that in my experience of living in this town for a long time, being a lawyer for 51 years, doing a lot of development stuff, there is no dwelling unit in Danvers that should have anything less than two parking spaces. And I will not support anything that does not provide two parking spaces per dwelling unit which is dedicated to that dwelling unit and not to be shared with anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I appreciate the comments that are here tonight, and they'll probably come up again. And some of these are very emotionally charged. But the emotionally charged ones I'm hearing are not planning or designed, they are enforcement. Snow removal, the planning board has already addressed that. And ZBA addresses that, says you've got to get it off-site. It's not, it's not ZBA's responsibility. The planning board's responsibility to say where it goes. And the town is not responsible for providing a spot. And if someone plows across the street and blocks a corner or a curb cut, that's an enforcement issue, not a zoning bylaw issue, a planning board issue, or a ZBA issue. If we have, you're right, we have the trash ordinance. You can't pick it up before a certain time. That's an enforcement issue, and no amount of language that's already in there inadequate is going to change behavior. Enforcement changes behavior. So I think that we, and I understand your years of frustration. I get it. I understand it. But it really isn't, the language that will come before us that says that needs to be tightened up about trash removal, 047, that's in there. And it's the enforcement of that. I'm going to disagree with my colleague David, that if there's a one-bedroom unit downtown, I don't think it needs two car spots. I think a one-bedroom unit is perfectly served by one car. If this person has a second car and wants to maintain that second car, put it in one of the public lots off, there's other solutions. It doesn't have to be on-site. I think that one, or in your case, one and a half. So pretty much you're saying the same thing. You can't have a half-spot that's truly, you know, so you're going to have two spots by the language that they're anyhow, or shared. And that's the other option, is we all, we're all, a lot of, I shouldn't say we all, a lot of people labor under the thought that, you know, everybody has two cars in the unit. Well, if you have one and there's one and a half between two units, work it out with your neighbor to use that other half, that other spot. And there's rotational parking, that was part of the parking study, is that, yeah, during the day, those people with those two cars, as we heard earlier, go to Boston. They're working in Boston, they're working in Welsey, they're heading out, leaving them open for daytime business. Weekends gets a little trickier, but weekends are always a little trickier. So I hesitate to set a line in the sand that says, I won't do this unless, without going through the process of understanding the opportunities for different parking models. So.
I think the parking ratio, and I very much appreciate Mr. Mills's point, I think, again, to hearken back to the first time I was up tonight, to talk about some of the changing demographics, I think part of, again, what we're trying to do is calibrate, these housing units aren't the same housing units that most of us occupy in town. We have over, I think, 11,000 single-family homes and less than 1,000 of anything else. These are all going to be something else. These aren't going to be that typical. And I think, again, what we're hearing from the older folks that we've been bringing out to these meetings is they're looking for something different. They're looking to downsize. We're also hearing from the younger folks who kind of want to get out of the parents' basement or come back to the town that they grew up in but don't have the means yet to afford a single-family home, but want to kind of get out of the city. Little stat, there's more millennials outside of the cities than in the cities because they're living in basements and whatnot. But, and they don't want to be there. So again, I think there are, while we have to be careful and calibrated appropriately, I think what we are trying to be cognizant of who we want in those units and what those households are looking for. And I think, to be fair to that, they're not looking for two and a half parking spaces per unit. They're making different life choices, and that's good for our community. Again, from a diversity, housing, stock diversity standpoint, that's what we want. We need more of that. And this is the place to do it, where we have public transit options. It's going to be harder to get better public transit if we don't have people using it more. And so again, it's kind of part of a bigger picture, and there's several facets to why we're making the choices that we're making. But much appreciated, and we certainly have heard this perspective a lot throughout the process.
Thank you. Mr. Prentice, did you want to offer anything? Appreciate you being here. Give you the opportunity to.
I'm, Bill Prentice, the planning board chair. I'm not sure how much I can add to it. I can say that if we don't do anything to downtown, the parking is not going to be solved. There's going to be problems parking down there because it's inadequate now. If we make these changes, I know that when I look at most sites, I'm always concentrating on circulation, and I'm concentrating on parking, to make sure that there's adequate parking for those particular sites. Businesses are going to have unique parking situations because each business is going to be different. Not everyone is going to be like a restaurant. So those kinds of parking situations are going to be separate from housing. What we're going to control is we can control with this type of zoning, how much the density goes according to the parking spaces themselves. So I understand your concerns. It is something that the board is constantly looking at. I don't want to comment on previous sites that may not work in the eyes of the Danvers public because those have unique situations. They're not part of this particular zoning. A lot of this zoning is coming out because we're trying to stop those type of situations from occurring again. So yes, we may give up a little bit of density closer to the downtown area, but it does decrease as we go further from the downtown and the commercial zones, and even more so when we're going over towards High Street. I know we're discussing the downtown Maple Street area than we are the High Street area, but it does kind of go hand in hand because they are similar in that fashion. I don't think there's really anything else I can add to that, unless there's something else you wanted to ask.
No, thank you. This board did direct the planning board to look at the rezoning of downtown and High Street and do it all at one time, not incrementally. So I appreciate you doing that and moving it forwards. And I look forward to your public hearing and coming back with your warrant article.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we refer the proposed downtown corridor zoning bylaw and zoning map amendment back to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendations to town meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Thank you. Thank you, Erin and Bill. What could be left? Town manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to be the keyboardist?
First, just a reminder, not really a reminder, but kind of looking ahead to our next meeting, you may have been planning to mention this, Mr. Chairman, but I'll mention as well that we're planning to have an update from the Health Department, Police Department in Danvers Cares on vaping, both in terms of what's happening at the state level and local enforcement. So that's currently scheduled for the meeting on the 17th.
Very good.
So I would mention that. And then the only item I have tonight, you received copies of the draft budget policy for fiscal year 2021. We had noted on the back, when we first reviewed this together, the two slight, well, the one slight change that was made in this year's draft was essentially rebranding the school stabilization fund into the debt stabilization fund, which is really what it's used for, and it's more consistent with the way you would see it elsewhere. When we have a debt service budget, those dollars are all commingled. We're appropriating one bottom line. And really, the use of that fund, whether it's for the Smith School now or a Public Works yard later, is offsetting the peak debt years, which is really the compilation of all of those individual issuances. This policy has been reviewed by both the school committee and the library trustees, and they support it as presented. So I'd be happy to take any questions or discussion on this, and we would incorporate this into the budget process moving forward.
David, any questions?
No, thank you, Dan.
Bill?
So you're only going to have one stabilization fund?
We would have two. So we would just, currently, we have two. We have the general stabilization fund and the school stabilization fund. We would have the general and the debt. So the use wouldn't change at all. The school stabilization fund is currently used to offset peak debt, and it would continue to be used to offset peak debt.
Okay.
Goddardner?
No, I think that school was more consumable. I think that, I understand why you're doing debt, and it may not be a school that you're preparing for, so I'm fine with this. Thank you. Also.
All right. Do you need a vote, Mr. Town Manager?
I would like a vote.
What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the, excuse me, Town of Danvers 2021 budget policy, fiscal budget policy as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I just want to say,
Yes.
Like everything that Steve puts together, it really, really, really seems to be high quality. I support it and will vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve, for another great job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Thank you. Something else?
That's all I have.
Wow.
That's it?
We've covered a lot of ground tonight.
We did. All right, the board will consider the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Thank you. Correspondents, selectmen, new business, previous new business updates, selectmen closing comments. David?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill?
Nothing.
Goddardner?
Yes, probably more closing comments and business for the board. I've been asked, as a board member of the Danvers Family Festival, to encourage people to consider volunteering as a board member for the family festival. We're celebrating our 41st year in 2020. We are excited about the programs that we're going to be offering. We are committed to them and looking forward to doing that. But the reality is, the current board is dwindling. It has been dwindling for years and needs to have a shot of fresh blood and fresh ideas to help us sustain. We've gone from, about 10 years ago, there was 23 or 25 members, and you had to, people were really fighting to get on the board. We actually had to institute a rotation plan so that after your three years, you took hiatus for a year and then will come back, just so we can get people on. This is not unlike the Garden Club. This is not unlike a lot of the social and civic organizations in town. People, they all find, and fraternal organizations, they're all find, volunteers are a dwindling resource. And as such, it would be, and it would be less than productive for the board to try to continue on with the six or eight members that will remain after 2020. So where, there have been pieces in the paper, you've seen some advertisements in the paper, social media has been a buzz. We're encouraging people to come out and help us sustain Family Festival after 2020 by volunteering as a board member. We have our meetings, the second Tuesday of every month, 7:00 at the DCAT Studios. Usually, the meetings run for an hour, hour and a half. And it's really a situation where many hands make light work. The way I describe it is the river's not deep, it's just very broad. We have just a lot of things to do that aren't necessarily very difficult or hard. And pretty much, the people who are on the board have been doing it so long, it's rote. But we're going to lose members at the end of this 2020 season and need to backfill them. So we don't want to go in with the concept that this is the last year of the family festival. We hope and pray it isn't. We hope to get a lot of people who will commit to being a board member, six meetings between January and June, then there's one or two afterwards. It's really not heavy lifting at this point. We are calling down 2020's offerings from the family festival itself to, we're dropping a couple of the people-heavy events. We think we're going to be doing Endicott Park Day. We're going to combine it with Scoop-a-Ball. We will obviously be doing Oldies, which is a staple of the town. We're doing the Sinatra brunch. We're doing a concert at the pavilion, as well as the booklets that we send out to everybody, and the surrounding tasks that go with that, getting insurance and getting the truck and so on and so forth. So we're making a plea to ask the community to help us out in keeping Family Festival alive after 2020 by committing some time. Maybe 20, 30 hours of effort, really, for the entire year. And hopefully, people have enjoyed Family Festival and are positioned now that they can give back. And we welcome new ideas. New board members bring new ideas. Maybe they, you have a great idea for a, you know, want to do a, I've seen things recently about a, you know, a Christmas tree bonfire, or whatever it is. You might have an idea that the current board hasn't even considered. And we'd encourage, and we would offer help, seeing that idea to fruition or not. So this is a plea on behalf of Family Festival, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Goddardner. Number of items. First, I have a letter from Senator Lovely, addressed to the board, thanking us for writing about House 2828 and Senate 2012, two bills before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, AKA TUE. When you sent the letter, TUE had yet to hold a hearing on these bills, but a hearing did take place on November 12. As the deadline had passed for cosponsorship of House bills, I took a closer look at Senate 2012, which would have a positive environmental, municipal, and public safety impacts. Accordingly, she signed on as a sponsor of the bill, cosponsor of the bill, and she appreciates the board taking the time to bring this important bill to her attention, and she looks forward to continuing to work with the town on initiatives that would benefit both Danvers and the Commonwealth. Joe Lovely. Today, Danvers Cares sponsored a TIPS training. I don't know if it went, was canceled, so has it been rescheduled?
Seventeenth.
Rescheduled for the 17th. But I want to thank the Police Department for spreading the word on the training. They actually visited all the license holders to make them aware of it, and it was a good response to that. So I appreciate the Police Department doing that on behalf of the community and Danvers Cares, and it's now the 17th. The warrant does close on December 13. I just wanted everybody to know that for a special town meeting, we will not have a warrant article on naming of town buildings. We've decided that we really don't have a policy or a procedure in place, so we'll work on looking at that going forwards. Tuesday, December 10, we'll be busy in Danvers. We have our business community holiday party at the Masonic Temple. Is it 4:30, Joe?
4:30.
4:30 to 7:00. Contributing sponsors, Eastern Bank, Northeast Community Bank, and we invite the business community to join us. It's a donation of $5.
That's also done under the planning board.
I said it would be a busy night.
Yes.
Right, that's correct. Made no sense, but please remember the veterans serving currently and those that did serve. And with that, can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Danvers.